Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our next series of budget meetings. Today's the municipal budget. I appreciate all the executive over here in attendance. We also have Erin Heimer, who's supervisor of accounting, Lola Barda, director of finance, Trevor Rigir, financial planning analyst, Rita Sittler, administrative services manager with the police service. We have Chief Murphy in attendance and inspectors Wes and Graham, and our chair Paul Carolyn for the police service. So welcome everyone to this meeting. We're gonna move it along. Before we get started, we'll just make a confirmation, those who are joining virtually, I believe Merrick Clark, you are joining virtually. Can you just do a visual confirmation, please?
Yes, can you see me on the screen?
We can see you, thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe everyone else that's joining virtually is there in an administrative support role. So, we're gonna get started. City manager, I'm gonna ask you to lead the way.
Thank you through the chair. As you know, we've used the council committee of the whole to parse out the different sections of the budget. We've had rates and utilities and various other items. And tonight, we'll be talking about the municipal budget specifically, and I will turn it over to managing director Egert for a few introductory comments. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of council. Thank you, city manager. I do wanna offer a few words of introduction to this particular session. Our 25-26 budget process includes four council committee of the whole meetings, and they will highlight rate-based utilities, energy production, municipal, land development and real estate, together with economic development. These three, these committee meetings will allow council to dig further into the details, to ask questions of staff to gain a full understanding before formally debating this at city council on December 2nd. The reports and materials you see today are for information only, and no decisions will be made by city council committee of the whole today. The municipal budget is a third of these four deliberation sessions. At this point, departments have completed their base operating budgets, identified operational cost pressures, and proposed new initiatives, both operating and capital opportunities. The purpose of this afternoon is to seek alignment with council on the municipal tax-supported budget. Council also has the opportunity to see how the city budget plans align with their strategic priorities. Preparing and approving the city budget is one of the most important tasks for both city council and for administration. The process is lengthy, over a period of several months, with many inputs and considerations, including ensuring that city continues to deliver valuable services to the community, and that we remain financially sustainable. Again, to balance the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow. Through this process, we are committed to advancing council's strategic priorities, addressing corporate needs, balancing affordability, with the need to be prudent in how we invest in infrastructure, and ensuring financial sustainability, and also using our funding resources thoughtfully and responsibly. We are investing in areas that are most important to residents. Eighty-nine million dollars of capital, that's growth and sustaining capital, and nine million dollars of new operating initiatives, investing in our important amenities, facilities, infrastructure, and that's infrastructure above and below the ground. The recent 2024 Ipsos survey reported an overall satisfaction with city services, with the majority of taxpayers confirming that they receive good value for tax dollars. This budget will ensure we are able to continue to deliver important and valuable services to this community while keeping our taxes affordable. I do wanna acknowledge the great work done by city staff in preparing this budget and related reference materials. They are the experts involved in the day-to-day delivery of these services, and they will be available for discussion during this presentation, and they are online, and I wanna thank them. So without further ado, I do wanna now introduce Erin Heimer, supervisor and budget lead for the 25 and 2026 budget. Erin.
Mr. Heimer, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, council. That's a good start. Okay. Thank you very much, managing director Egert, and thank you, council, for allowing me to be here with you today to discuss the municipal component of our city's overall budget. This is the third meeting that we've had on our budget deliberation series, going through the various areas of the city budget. And just need a little bit of help here with the clicker. Is it on? It is on. Maybe it is me. Okay, good. There we go. Okay, so as we mentioned before, our city's broken up into four main components. Today, we're here to talk about municipal. These are not proportionate, they're just meant to describe the four various areas of our city. As mentioned before, we are gonna have a special segment on economic development in the next series with land development and real estate. But to be clear, the economic development budget is a part of the municipal budget that we're discussing today. But just for your own awareness, we will have more time to talk about that particular component of the budget in the next series. As well, I wanna draw your attention to your, the briefing note. The appendices in the briefing note will be very helpful for you during today. There are a few schedules where we talk about the new growth opportunities that are being proposed as a part of this budget, as well as the items that have been deferred, as well as our growth opportunities on the capital side as well. So, we will get to some slides where we'll show those numbers in summary. I won't go into them in detail because most of that content we covered during our June and July sessions, but I will highlight some of the bigger items as we go through. Okay. So, in today's session, I want to begin by talking about property taxes, because our municipal budget, that's the primary source of revenue for the municipality, is property taxes. I wanna start by talking about the value that taxes provide for the residents of Medicine Hat. And next, we will turn to the most visible fiscal anchor of our municipal budget. We'll talk about our budget gap and some of the pressures that we're seeing with regard to the budget gap. We'll discuss the historical effort to close the budget gap, what trends we're seeing, the impact that they have on the gap, and what we're doing to close the gap in 25-26. After this, we'll look at our budget assumptions that we used to build the budget, which is a reflection back on what we did in April with council, and where things have landed in our budget recommendation before you today. And then, we will look at the property tax recommendation in a little bit more detail before looking at some risks and then closing off today's session. Around five o'clock, if, 5:15, if I forget, if there's a desire for a break or something of that nature, feel free to cut me off. Okay, so let's start by talking about your tax dollars at work, talking about the value that taxes provide for the city. The city does a lot of things. All the areas of the city provide value to residents, either directly or indirectly. Some of those things are most notable, some, kind of like an iceberg. You see the things on the top, above the water, very visibly. However, the majority of the iceberg is below the water, and that's what provides it its stability to be able to float. So, there are some things that are more noticeable, things like parks, transit, protective services like fire, police, emergency, roads, our communications team, and our community supports. There are other things that we do that impact a smaller segment of our city, but are nevertheless public services, like our airport, our economic development, our planning and development services, and our environment team. And then, we have services that we say we can't do without it. These are internal services, most of them serve the groups that are providing our parks and rec, our transit, things like information technology, which provides computers so that we can do our work. If we didn't have these, we wouldn't be able to provide value to the citizens of Medicine Hat. However, most residents wouldn't interact with them on a daily basis, and so sometimes they go unnoticed. Nevertheless, every component of the iceberg helps it to float and is a part of what we do. So, when we look at, how do we measure value? It's a very subjective sometimes question to ask when it comes to are people getting value for their taxes. However, one of the ways that we look at that is through the most recent Ipsos survey that was done here in May. The community satisfaction survey shows that the city is creating value for residents. Some of the highlights show that most respondents expressed an overall satisfaction with the services that they are receiving. Seventy-three percent felt that they were getting good value for their tax dollars. Ninety percent said that they, that their quality of life in Medicine Hat is good. Eighty-nine percent said they would recommend Medicine Hat as a place to live, and that's a testimony to the services that are provided within the city of Medicine Hat, and a testimony to all the hard work that our administrators do, and our council does, to make this a good place for people to live. The survey also indicated, interestingly enough, that one of the most frequently requested types of information was on city taxes, property taxes, and budget. So, reviewing these results, we do see that there's a lot of reasons to suggest that Hatters are finding, on average, value for the services that they are receiving within the city. In the next section, I wanna look a little bit closer at some of those areas of importance, and talk about the services that we do provide, that tax dollars go to provide for residents of the city. The first one here is parks, recreation, and culture services. Parks, recreation, and culture is one of the areas of our city that surpasses other municipalities in providing value for residents. Our city provides parks, recreational facilities, and cultural services, and it does this through a blend of different service providers, both private, nonprofit, and public sectors. Often, parks, recreation, and culture services are considered nice-to-haves or extras, but parks and recreation and culture services strengthen the fabric of our community. They provide to individual health and well-being, they provide learning and growth opportunities for youth and adults alike, and contribute to the attraction and retention of residents, who in turn support businesses and education institutions in our community. They create opportunities for community belonging and reduce antisocial and self-destructive behaviors throughout many facets of our society. Investment in parks and green spaces can benefit residents also by increasing assessment value for adjacent properties. In the most recent community survey, these services were considered very important to residents. According to the 2022 Recreation, Parks, and Recreation Master Plan, the city of Medicine Hat has twenty-four, twenty-five-point-four hectares of parkland per 1,000 residents. That's nearly four times the median compared to other communities. We also have twice as many walking and cycling paths, twice as many playgrounds, three times as many aquatic facilities, and four times as many indoor rinks. On top of that, our city hosts a premiere of facilities, including Big Marble Go, Esplanade, Co-op Place, the Echo Dale Regional Park, our Gas City Campground, and Palm Track. We have some very impressive facilities for a city of our size and population. It is because of such amenities and services that, in the most recent community survey, Medicine Hatters expressed a strong level of satisfaction with recreation facilities and culture and entertainment facilities and programs. And we're always looking for ways to do things more efficiently and effectively. For example, this year, we brought in the Co-op Place back in-house, the operations back in-house, and as a result, we're able to run this facility more efficiently and provide option, more options for talent and booking services. This year alone, we've been able to bring in names like Mariana's Trench, The Sheepdogs, High Valley, Core Blonde, just to name a few. It's safe to say that the city provides a standard of quality and excellence in its parks, recreation, and culture services that rival other municipalities. However, it's important to recognize that to maintain such a superior level of service, that comes with a cost. This year, we're proposing several investments into parks, recreation, and culture, including sixty thousand to increase our community vibrancy funding, to support more projects, events, and festivals throughout the city, bringing the total funding up to two-hundred-and-thirty-five per year, one-hundred-and-fifty thousand annually to implement the city's community well-being plan, and one-hundred-and-twenty-five annually to introduce a new trail, or sorry, five, seventy-five thousand annually to introduce a trail crack sealing program to preserve our city's over one-hundred-and-fifty-five kilometers of trails. Looking into the future, Parks and Recreation also outlines the need for future facilities, and that is what we're key phrasing, facilities for the future. It's worth noting that facilities for the future is not a part of this budget recommendation, but it will be coming back to council shortly.
Mr. Heimer, councilor Robinson has a question.
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. Question about aquatic facilities, because I think my math must be terribly wrong. One aquatic facility per ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-three residents. What aquatic facilities would those be? Because I, and public services, I think there's two. So does, are we talking indoor and outdoor?
Yeah, so it'd be indoor and outdoor pools, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's it, you can continue.
Okay. Transit service is another area, essential service for the city, and we derive value through this service and for, through continued dedication to excellence, and always looking for ways to improve and make things more efficient. This is an often overlooked essential service within the city, because not everyone uses transit, but for those who do, they rely on it for, to live and work in our city. Our special transit service also aids those who have special transport needs, such as those on dialysis, receiving physiotherapy, education, work, and other critical medical needs. Because of this, transit services continue to be ranked very high of importance in the community amongst those who actually use the service. One way that the city creates value from its transit is by continuous improvement and efficiency. Between 2019 and 2024, the city has been able to improve the efficiency of its transit service, that's ride per service hours, by thirty-nine percent, and special transit by twenty-five percent. Some of this is due to increased ridership during that time, but we have also seen, we've also been working hard to find efficiencies in our route planning and scheduling, including the introduction of on-demand services that have allowed us to service lower ridership areas without having to have a regular bus route to those areas. Despite the increased efficiencies, the city's ridership continues to grow beyond what we can service. The city has, now has a ridership on its regular transit of somewhere around eighty-six-thousand riders per month. That's the equivalent of pretty much everyone in the city using the bus service one and a half times per month. That's over a hundred-and-twenty percent from pre-COVID levels. In this budget, we are asking for an additional one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty annual hours of service to respond to this need. This ask does not restore us to the levels of service that we had pre-COVID, because the efficiencies that we've been able to find in our scheduling and route planning have allowed us to be more efficient in providing service. We also have a growing number of special transit riders, and now are up to about two-point-two-seven-hundred per month. The city's special transit service has been, has not been able to keep up with demand for these services, and in this budget, we're asking for an additional eight hours per weekday in 2025 and again in 2026 to respond to this growing demand of special transit customers.
Counselor Van Dyke has a question.
Yes, thank you through the chair. So I was just wondering if in this municipal budget, if the current fair entry subsidy is protected, and then any additional funding that you need for the special transit? I know there's provincial funds that have come in. I don't, obviously, we don't have the details here, but is that still covered in this, the next two-year budget?
Yes, those funds are, have been protected in this budget. Okay. The next area of interest is our protective services, and I'll start by talking about the police. The Medicine Hat Police Service has an authorized strength of one-hundred-and-thirteen sworn police officers, thirty-two civilian professional staff, seven community peace officers, and twenty-one volunteers. The number of calls for service continue to increase. In 2023, the service responded to thirty-two-thousand-five-hundred calls, which is an increase of about twenty percent from just two years prior. Person-based offenses, property crimes, and mental health calls for service are some of the types of calls which have experienced the biggest increase during this period. This in combination with the increase in complexity of the investigative process has placed additional operational pressure on the service. Despite this, Medicine Hat Police Service clearance rates remain above the provincial and national averages. The Medicine Hat Police Service has strong partnerships with other community organizations, such as our local school districts through the School Resource Officer Program, or SRO. SROs work day-to-day inside our high schools, supporting the school system. The goal, the goal of this program is to reduce the involvement of youth in our criminal justice system, and when possible, provide supports and referrals. SROs can act as mentors for students and build positive relationships with students by being visible and available within their schools. This year, the Medicine Hat Police Service is asking for funding to expand this SRO program by one SRO. If approved, this position would support council's strategic priority for partnerships and governance, and would be equally funded by the school division, who is strongly supportive of this program. The service is also requesting funding for two additional police officer positions for our downtown, for the downtown patrol unit, and to support areas near downtown, where residents have reported decreased feelings of safety. Social disorder has presented challenges for this city, and as it has for a number of communities across North America. Concerns related to mental health, addictions, and homelessness continue to increase in our community. And in 2023, the number of mental health interventions not leading to an arrest by the police were up one-thousand-and-fifty-five, that's a twenty percent increase in just over two years. Social disorder is a complex issue and requires a coordinated effort across provincial, federal, and municipal governments, and with nonprofit organizations. Not all these resources are operated by the municipality, but the Medicine Hat Police Service remains committed to working with other community support agencies to address social disorder within our community. The next one is fire and emergency services. On the fire and emergency services side, the city hosts four platoons of twenty firefighters, and four crews of nine-one-one dispatchers, and three fire stations, and one communication center across the city. In 2023, our nine-one-one communication center processed fifty-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-seven calls, and our firefighters responded to four-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-five calls. Last budget cycle, we introduced seven new firefighter positions to achieve the National Fire Protection Association standards. The, the new staffing model also introduced the department, reduced the department's overtime by a projected two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand from 2022 to 2025, while working through both long-term physical and mental health energy, injuries within the department. It takes only eighty seconds for a firefighter to gear up and be on the road towards an incident. And in 2023, firefighters were able to save about fifty-five million dollars' worth of property within the city, that's about, with a ninety-six percent save rate. Fire response time to incidents has not only met national standards for services, but it has exceeded them. This is an impression, impressive accomplishment for a fire team, considering the, the fire team services about sixty-six-thousand residents and about twenty-nine-thousand family dwellings. This year, our fire team is looking for some additional funding supports for a health and wellness program. Our firefighters are exposed to various occupation Our firefighters are exposed to various occupational hazards, including smoke inhalation, physical exertion, heat stress, and exposure to hazardous materials. Currently, firefighters receive a physical assessment only once every two years. The funding request this year would allow for members to receive an annual physical assessment, as described by national standards. It would also provide funding for both firefighters and nine-one-one dispatchers, who may be suffering from mental health struggles such as PTSD, anxiety, or depression because of the demanding and often traumatic nature of the work that they do. The next area I wanted to highlight is roads and traffic management. Our area, our city creates value for citizens by using a, what we call preventative approach to road maintenance, which means less potholes, smoother roads, and less rude, road crew disruptions. The city's road network includes one thousand one hundred and ninety kilometers of roads. It includes five hundred and twenty-nine kilometers of sidewalk, twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-six street signs, eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-one street lights, and twenty-one bridges. In most, in the most recent community survey, Medicine Hatters rated the maintenance, cleaning, and upgrading of streets and sidewalks as their number-one area of importance, with ninety-six percent of survey respondents calling roads either important or very important. Eighty-eight percent also rated traffic management and improving the flow of traffic as important. One of the unique things that many people may not know about the city is that we use a preventative approach to road maintenance. Did you know that one of the most expensive ways to do road maintenance is to wait until the road is completely failed, and then replace the entire road? Preventative maintenance approaches can save between four and forty times the cost of a full road replacement. However, due to budget constraints, many other cities will rate, wait until the roads fail, because it's cheaper in the short run, but it ends up being more expensive in the long run. The City of Medicine Hat performs annual preventative road maintenance through crack sealing and a new method that we've been experimenting in 2024 called micro-surfacing, as well as mill and overlay techniques, to preserve road network and avoid more costly road replacements. Not only is this more cost-effective, but it also means that the average resident gets to experience the benefit of better-maintained roads that are smoother and have less potholes. Proper maintenance will extend the life of our roads and allow residents to be less disturbed, disturbed by road maintenance. In this budget, we have allocated six million dollars in our sustaining capital budget towards preventative approaches to road maintenance. This is consistent with the 2024 budget. However, because of the rising cost of inflation, we do suspect that this will mean that we will be able to service about fifteen percent less kilometers this, during this budget cycle than in previous budget cycles. However, we have held this budget flat to help reduce the burden on taxpayers. While there is a desire to expand this program eventually to local roads as well, our preventative road maintenance remains primarily dedicated to higher-traffic volume roads.
Mr. Heimer, I, I actually have a question through the city manager, maybe you can direct it accordingly. Looking at the treatment chart or matrix there, just out of curiosity, I have observed, one person's observation, but I have observed more of that crack sealing going on. So is that, is that a, again, looking at the, the years of, of time that, that it mitigates necessity for full rebuild, do we do that crack sealing on an ongoing, every-year cycle, or is that something we do periodically, or is my observation, coincidentally or otherwise, of more crack sealing having been done in the last few months tied, tied to the fact that we have, we have further breakdown of road surfaces, which means we have to be a little bit more aggressive with that sealing program? I, I specifically highlight Rosklen Drive. A huge segment of it was done, and I drive it every day, and I hadn't really consciously observed that in the past, so when I noticed, it was hard not to notice. So I was curious about that since it was up here today. So I don't know, city manager, who you want to have answer that, please?
Thank you, and through the chair, I will turn that over to Managing Director Bohan.
Thank you, city manager. Mr. Chair, the crack sealing program is something that we do to prevent damage to the road base, that's the, the bottom layer of the road, and we, once that water and seeps into the, the road base, it can erode it, and once that road base is eroded, we'll end up with a, a full, potentially a full road rehabilitation. We do have an annual crack sealing program that we go out usually in the fall, but we try and do it throughout the year to try and seal the road and prevent any damage to the road base.
Okay, thank you. Just to follow up, I was looking to have somebody acknowledge my follow-up, but I guess I'm cheering, so I will continue. I, when you get to a, a sealing program like that, a crack sealing program, a pretty aggressive one, and I'll cite Rosklen Drive again, is that, how many years between a sealing program and a, and a resurfacing? How many years does that buy you, so to speak?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you be okay if I call in? Stan Okelski, the director of our municipal works department is online, and he can give you a lot more detail on the frequency of that, so, Stan?
Thank you, through the chair. Yes, crack sealing is a, it, it's a method that you usually use fairly recently after a road has been rehabbed, so for instance, if we go in and do a, a mill and overlay on a, on a road, we'll go in and two or three years later to do crack sealing to protect that subsurface. Crack sealing typically lasts for about six or seven years, and then you have to go in and, and do it again, so it buys you about six or seven, eight years.
Thank you. I don't see any other speakers, you can continue.
Okay, with regard to roads, Medicine Hatters rated the maintenance, cleaning, and upgrading of our streets and sidewalks with a seventy-nine percent satisfaction rate, and seventy-four percent when it came to traffic management and the improvement of the flow of traffic. Both of these satisfaction levels exceeded the norm, however, there's always room for improvement, and this year, we have introduced a number of measures to help assist with this. This year, our road network has several asks in this budget, one of which being roadway upgrades for the Third Street northeast, northwest in Riverside, as well as downtown upgrades to the Third Street. We have included some asks for road maintenance, to make road maintenance more efficient and effective through our asphalt and three-seven-seven hotbox requests, which are the road repair equipment up on your screen. We also have, in this budget, asks for improved pedestrian connectivity networks across the city, and money to improve our streetlights and enhance and address traffic safety within the city.
Mr. Heimer, we have Council McGrogan.
Yeah, thank you, and through the chair, I'm curious about your pedestrian connectivity. Can you give a little more detail on, on what that's about, please?
I will pass that one on to Pat Bohan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna actually ask Stan, he's got a very good handle on this, I think he can give you a very fulsome answer, so Stan?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. The pedestrian connectivity is related to gaps in our sidewalk network, so there are certain areas, for example, the, the hospital area, there's, there's certain blocks that don't have sidewalks, so this program will, will address those gaps. It also will address crossings where wheelchair ramps are required.
Okay. Thank you. Moving back then, okay, there we go. Okay, another area of our city I want to highlight is our communications and customer service. Our communications team creates value for the city through servicing greater numbers, increasing volumes of requests, and finding innovative ways to improve communications. Communications was considered important by ninety-four percent of respondents in the recent community survey. Communications is a form of customer service. Our city fields requests for information all the time, whether it's Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, or FOIP requests, or information about utility and tax bills, or informal forms of requests for information. As a city, we all engage at some level with the public and share the responsibility of communication and customer service. We are seeing an exponential increase in the number of requests for information across the city and over the last number of years. One example of that would be FOIP requests. FOIP requests have increased from an estimated labor time for city employees of about ninety-four hours to about four hundred and seventy hours in 2024, and that's a year-to-date figure. That's an increase of about four times as much time spent by the city responding to FOIP requests.
Mr. Heimer, Council Conodle has a question.
Thank you, Council Dumanowski, through the chair to Mr. Heimer. So I'm wondering, I, I understand that oftentimes it is, and I always am worried that I sound critical, that archaic technology makes it difficult to retrieve data. So I'm wondering if you can tell me a little bit about what pros, if, if there is any particular steps that are going to be taken in regards to updating software so that retrieving data is more efficient, because that will save a lot of trouble.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, and through the chair. I think part of our overall workforce strategy that we're implementing, Council Conodle, will be looking at how we deliver services, not just externally, but internally, and how are we doing these processes? So could we be doing them better with AI? Could we be using different software? Is our, are our systems siloed in the various department, where one department's working here and there? And we have found very frequently, since I've been here in February of 2023, that trying to gather data for different things is extremely challenging, as you know, because some of the things you've asked me for, you're like, why don't we have that data? But we are looking at that through the overall structure review and workforce strategy. So there's nothing specific in the budget because it's covered through our operating costs, but we're always being mindful, and one of the things that I've noticed from my position is that we're very siloed, almost like we were running as business units, which tends to happen in a larger, more complex organization, but it also leads to fractured systems. So we're trying to rectify that, but it will take a bit of time. I hope I answered your question.
Just before I recognize, Council McGrogan, Council Hyder, you had a question? Now, may I, maybe I will interrupt you. Is it a different question, Council McGrogan, I had a follow-up? Is it a different question?
Okay, I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm gonna go. I'm, I'm just, on this slide in particular, I guess the question that I wonder about is this people or technology that we're investing in? And I know you said there, there's no dollars related to it yet, city manager, but what, what way are we leaning if we look at this as a plan to improve our communications? Is it more people, or better technology, or a mixture?
I can, I can try that one if you like.
Mr. Heimer, go ahead.
For sure. Yeah, so it's a, it's a great question. Right now, the increased volume is being absorbed by our existing workforce, and we're seeing that as a very laborious task. It's taking a lot of time, a lot of effort from our employees. In today's day and age, there has been a shift in the expectation on the amount of information or the types of information that are available in the public, and we've all been a part of that, that change ever since the pandemic. And so with, with a lot of that comes an increased desire for knowing or understanding about various areas of the city and greater levels of transparency, and not all of that is a bad thing. What we are looking at in this budget, it's a great question, is we do have a, a number of different ways that we are trying to employ technology as opposed to people to deal with a lot of these issues. So a lot of the bottlenecks for information, whether it's FOIP requests, whether it's through just questions about a utility bill, what's going on, a lot of that can be solved through technology and having that information available. It's not just about having it available, but having it in the format or in the place that people want to see it. So one of the things that we noticed in the community survey is that a lot of people in the city really would like to be communicated through email. That's kind of the number-one way that people in the city would like to be connected. So we have increased our, the ways that, that we're utilizing email communication. Just to give you some examples, we've enhanced our e-notification options on our website so that people can now follow things like city news, development notices, council highlights, public notices, safety notices, service disruptions and closure, closures, and alerts. We've launched a weekly e-newsletter called Need to Know. This weekly compilation of city information is delivered weekly to allow any subscribers to our news, city news on our website to access it. We also post Need to Know on our social media. With regard to email, we've also started doing email marketing. We've relaunched an e-newsletter for Medicine Hat Economic Development, and started an e-newsletter as well for land and real estate for those who are interested in those two topics. On our city website, we've also done a lot of work to increase the amount of information that is available on the website for people to see. A lot of, a lot of different things related to energy production, electrification, utilities, development notices, we've also launched all of our city financial, or all of our city policies. That repository is now on our website as well, so there's a lot of ways that we have been working to increase the amount of information that is available, using the techniques that most residents are interested in. But as far as technological advancement as well, we are looking within this budget to introduce the advanced collaboration ecosystem, that's one of the new growth opportunities that is within this budget. This, this business case has four key deliverables aligned with council's strategic objectives. One of those key deliverables will facilitate storing, sorting, and metadata, metadata tagging in a central location. This will enable records, will enable a records database that will facilitate FOIP and general information requests, ensure structure and compliance, and internal and public record management, and create a foundation for public access to promote appropriate information. So we are, we are trying to make strides in that direction for sure. Right now, though, this is falling mostly on our staff to, to be able to handle this increased volume.
Council McGrogan has a follow-up.
Just a quick one, you can just answer yes or no to this one. So then, I, I take it on December the second, when we're deliberating this budget, it will be clear which is technology and which is people, that we're actually allocating funding to, or how it's gonna be kind of, I guess, split, if that would be a proper way to look at it, I'm just, yes or no? Will it be laid out, I guess, in a detail that, like, these are four very important things, and I'm, I totally, well, the way, I, I don't have any, I'm not objecting to any of them, I think they're, they're absolutely necessary, but I'm, I'm just curious how, I guess, plain that will be.
The, the only budget ask that we have that will relate to this topic will be the advanced collaboration ecosystem, the rest will be maintained within our current status quo budget.
Council Hyder.
Thank you, and through the chair, I just have a, a question, maybe comment. FOIP requests, so we have ninety-four hours in 2021, and then in the matter of three years, it jumps four times. Erin, can you just tell me, so that obviously would require a lot of man-hours, am I, is that correct?
Go ahead.
Yes, city manager.
Thank you.
Sorry, city manager, take the floor.
Go ahead, through the chair, thank you. Really, it's unfortunate, we've reached out to the Privacy Commissioner, and the way that the FOIP Act is written, it's, it's almost incessant right now, and staff are exhausted because it's not, it's, it's ongoing, and it's- it's ongoing, and it's, it involves a lot of manpower. We're trying to get some data just for council and the public so they can understand how consuming these requests are. And just anecdotally, I know that when the new city clerk started, I think in her first three weeks, she spent 70 hours on FOIP requests. So we would like to get that data, and we are tracking it so we can understand more and give this to the Privacy Commissioner, too, because it is, it is overwhelming for all of us, because once a request comes in, there's a point person, but then it involves various other departments, and it has been, it has been relentless.
Just a follow-up. Thank you, City Manager Mitchell. I find it, yes, relentless, and I just can't even wrap my head around the, like, the incessant need for information from the, well, individuals that, that can cause that many, that much time, for just example, our city clerk, or our, our employees to do that. It just, it boggles my mind, and is it a, is it, the people don't, of course, trust? What is the need to know constantly? And it's, and I, I have nothing but empathy, and I can't imagine the frustration staff would feel. And to me, there has to be a line drawn in the sand where this is just, you're, people, you're taking advantage of this if you want to, and I'm glad that you're, you know, with the Privacy Commissioner. I, I think that's fantastic, because I think this is, and it's being abused, as far as I'm concerned.
City Manager.
Thank you, through the chair. I think it's, it's a trend sadly in local government. One thing I would really encourage the public to understand, the nine people sitting around the table are your representatives here, and they're here to make decisions. With regards to us as a public sector organization, we are heavily scrutinized, we're audited, we have financial documents, we have legislation, we have to follow various pieces of legislation. We're all municipal professionals, we know what that is. So we are monitored constantly from both the provincial and federal government, and we do our best to give as much information as we can to the public in the time to get our other work done, too. So we are, we are saddened by this trend, and it just shows a lack in, in government institutions completely.
Okay, looks like we can continue, only 40 more slides to go. Mr. Heimer, continue.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it was Stephen Covey who said that.
I did have a comment. I apologize, Councilor Dumanowski.
Sorry, Mayor Clark. Go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you. Through the chair, I, I do just want to maybe push back a little. Public access to the information of their public bodies, the governments that they elect and that can force them to pay taxes and pass bylaws that limit their freedoms, et cetera, et cetera. It, it's a fundamental aspect of democracy. If we had more of a, like, a library of, of documents that we just automatically, if it's not confidential, we disclose it, that would reduce that time, but I feel that the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act is a law that we have to abide by. So being dismissive of that right, I, I would suggest is maybe not appropriate, and I will also note that the, the Privacy Commissioner has not found that people are, like, in the four or five cases that city administration challenged the requests, they were not found to be vexatious, frivolous, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to be careful about that we recognize the importance of transparency in democracy and accountability of public services, because we have lots of rights and powers that are, are given to us by the citizens, and so we, we have an obligation to be open and transparent with them. Not saying that anyone said it was inappropriate, but I think it's important to recognize the value of it.
Councilor Hyder, and then Councilor Robbins.
Thank you, through the chair. Absolutely, Mayor Clark, I completely, most of that I completely agree with. What, what I was concerned with is the amount of hours that this is consuming our staff, and I'm not saying anything about FOIP as being a bad thing. I just think some things get carried away, and I, when you look at these hours and the amount of work that it goes into, it's, it's, it just, to me, sometimes things get abused or get taken advantage of. So those were just my thoughts. I just find it astronomical.
Councilor Robbins.
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. I, I think, to me, I mean, we're talking budget here, and so what you're telling us is that that increase of FOIP requests by four times in 2024 compared to what it was in 2021 is just going to be absorbed by existing staff, and I have concerns whether that's sustainable. First of all, so I, I know you've given that some thought, City Manager, this is, falls under your purview, you've given that some thought, but I think it's important for the citizens of the city to know that, obviously, FOIP, I've been under FOIP legislation almost my entire career, any decision I make is, people are entitled to get any of the documents and background information that I had. When I made the decision, I don't have any issue with any of that, I don't have any issue with FOIP, I think it exists for a reason. But when the FOIP requests have increased to this level, that's going to cost the city some money, and we're talking about budget. So not whether FOIP is right or wrong, or not whether, you know, you're telling us that the FOIP requests have increased to the point where it's four times what it was before. I'm assuming we had a FOIP person before, coordinator, whatever the title was, who made sure that those FOIP requests were answered, and now we need four of those people. That's what I've just heard here. So I see that it's not in the budget for 2025, 2026, and I know we keep saying, don't add, don't add, but at what cost to the people doing this work is where my concern is. So I'll just leave those, those comments for your consideration.
All right, we're going to continue, Mr. Heimer.
Thank you. And I believe the numbers, Terilyn, that I have up here are just the time that your team is spending on FOIP requests. This doesn't include the time that when those requests need to be, say, referred to another department, there's other staff as well that are involved in that. Another stat that's not on here is what we call our two-by-fourteens, which is a way that we respond to requests from the community as well. And we've also seen an increase on that side as well. We don't have statistics on that one, per se, but, for example, our Planning and Development Services area has been seeing an increase to the number of two-by-14 requests coming after the enhanced development notice practices were developed. Obviously, things are more out in the open, and so there's more questions, more concerns about those things. So we are seeing on, on multiple fronts that there's an increase in expectation for information from the community. And I believe it was Stephen Covey who said that mistrust is a tax, trust is a dividend, and when you have trust in an organization, it can, it can help to alleviate a lot of the concerns that people have about information. And whether or not that is a trend that is something that is internal or external, we all have a part to play in developing that trust, maintaining that trust, and I think providing and having transparency is, is a good thing as well. So we are looking at ways, you're right, this is not sustainable. Within our organization, the levels even just for the FOIP requests is now a part-time job for somebody, whereas they already have a full-time job to do. So we do need to look to find ways to make this more accessible. We are looking at records retention as another area where we're trying to develop some tools to be able to make records more obtainable, more searchable, more, better organized. So there, there are efforts within the organization to buck this trend by finding technology as a way of making information more available as opposed to having staff gather and direct this information on an ad hoc basis.
Councilor Robbins.
Yeah, sorry, I, you, something you said just reminded me, I wanted to pick up a thread of what Mayor Clark said, which is really about making access to the, this information public. And I think, I'm not sure how the FOIP requests have come in, if it's the same people doing FOIP requests all the time, or it's, or it's lots and lots of people, but it's sort of like when you answer a FOIP request and you give access to the information to just one party who was asked, then we don't have, we, we have been transparent with that one person, obviously, and we've provided the FOIP information, but how does that get shared with a larger audience? And is there a way to, like you said, either by automation or something else to have more of these records? And there's lots of them that we've discussed at this table that we wanted to see public information, and as we know, under FOIP, if it's already out in the public, you don't need to respond to the FOIP request. So that would save a lot of time, but I appreciate having had to answer them within my own day job, that somebody is the coordinator, much like the city clerk, gets the request, and let's say it's a file that I worked on. Every single prosecutor, support staff, anyone who touched that file has to submit their, any documents they have, and gathering all of those, you can imagine, takes quite a, quite a bit of time. And so I appreciate that we're only seeing, again, that, to use your analogy, the tip of the iceberg of all of the work that's required to even get that request together.
Just before I recognize you, City Manager, Mayor Clark, you had your hand up, it's down, or you no longer needing to ask a question?
Um, if I may, thank you, Councilor Dumanowski, through the chair. Appreciate Councilor Hyder's clarification and completely agree with Councilor Robbins' comments, both the first and second time. I just picked up on Councilor Robbins' comment that we're asking to reduce. I'm not 100% sure what exactly we're reducing and, and that, but one of the things that I think is an outstanding request, and if I am, if I have missed this, please inform me, but the delta in staff from, like, 2002 to now, and what those new staff positions are, and, and cost, et cetera, because to Councilor Robbins' point, we're legally obligated to do this thing. There's probably other things that we're not legally obligated to do, so if we're going to readjust staff, I think, you know, priority has to go to things that we are legally required to do. And I just don't know what the, I think Councilor Hirsch has, has asked this question, you know, from accelerated financially fit to now, like, what, what's the delta on staffing changes? And I'm, I, I believe that request is outstanding, but again, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, this conversation's delving a little bit into the weeds, but I'm going to have the City Manager ask a question or make a comment.
Thank you, through the chair, and yes, I do agree, we've kind of gotten off track here. That information, I believe, has been given to council on the amount of staff and staffing several times. I wanted to respond to Councilor Robbins' question in regards to how does this information get out? One of the things we do, do is collaboratively, when we get the requests and the information, we, we identify trends and we notice those, and then we make sure that that information is getting to the public. For example, when we see a lot of requests for, example, on can we not see the building permits online, then we took that in and we worked collaboratively with communications to put it online. So I guess the question about one person getting to see it in FOIP, to answer your question, we do watch and we do monitor the trends to see what is the information that the public is looking for and seeking, and how can we be more effective in getting that to them?
Mayor Clark has a follow-up.
Just respectfully, I would request that the staffing information that you noted that's come to council repeatedly, if you could just provide that, I super apologize. I, I don't recall seeing the change in staffing, like, what new positions have been added. And I, clearly, City Manager Mitchell, you, you have, you've said you've sent that out, so if you wouldn't mind, please just provide it to me. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Heimer, continue.
Okay. Just as one note before we go off the slide, I do want to make note of the other enhancing communication options, things that we have done. Not only are we looking for online, but we're also doing more public participation with our municipal mingles and town halls as well. So just want to mention those, and a special highlight for the Shape Your City, which is where you can go, it's on the city website, to find information about all of the hot topics within the city, including the budget. So that's a good place to get information. Okay. One of the, one of the final areas that I do want to highlight on the municipal side is community support. So one of the ways that the city provides value to residents is through providing community support. This year, the city has provided a historic level of community relief in the past two years. The, one of the, one of the trends that we are seeing has been an increased demand for supports from the community, and part of this obviously has to do with the pandemic, the cost of living, as well as some of the needs that have resulted out of the pandemic, including needs within our community for support on housing, supports with those seeking help for mental health, or, as we mentioned before, social disorders. So these have, these have created an increased need within our community for support. I'm not going to read everything on the screen for you, but it is meant to give you a bit of a highlight of all of the things that the city is doing to try to help those who are in need within our community. And I think that this is something that, as a council, as an administration, we should be proud of. The city has gone up and beyond over the last number of years to provide for the residents of our city in many, many different ways. Just to highlight a few, the 33.2 million that was provided as cross-pressure relief credit in 2023, the freezing of property taxes through 2020 and 2021 is, as well as a reduction in our budgeted tax increase from 4% down to 2.5% in 2022, which reduced the city's annual revenues by about $7.5 million. 2.3 million approximately given through Fair Entry Utility Credit Program, 1.2 million forecasted to renew the Moose and Crestwood Rec Centers, a million dollars in 2023, 2024 for Halo operations, 870,000 to the Curling Club, and then 300,000 to our Medicine Hat Public Library. The numbers on the right-hand side are some, more of the community-city funded grants that, that we provide, and some of those are more on a annual basis, we do them more on an ongoing basis, so. But one of note that it is not ongoing is the 775,000 of land donated to the Community Housing Society last year. So again, I'm not going to go through every one of these initiatives, so save some time there. But part of the purpose of putting this up is to recognize that our city has been tasked with a lot of initiatives. There's been a lot of things that have been going on, a lot of things that we're doing to try to not be always reactive all the time, but proactive, find ways to create value, create efficiencies within the city. I just want to note that a lot of these things, you know, especially environmental framework, have come out of this council, things that we need to do, things that are important for the city to do, but they are asks from council as well. And these are, these are things that take time, they take effort, they take consulting dollars. And these are things that take time, they take effort, they take consulting dollars, they take staff time to complete, and typically, there's a bit of a latency effect as well, because once we complete an initiative, it usually comes with some recommendations for increased service or different things that can have an impact on budget. So I just want to acknowledge that there are a lot of things that we are doing across the city that residents should be aware of. These things are ongoing all the time. City staff are doing their day jobs, but they're also working on all of these different initiatives across the city. And just as a note, we're always looking for ways to do things more efficiently, more effectively. One thing I did want to highlight here, just of special note, the land use bylaw refresh that you see up on the screen, this is an initiative other cities have taken on as well. For example, City of Lethbridge is going through a land use bylaw update right now. It's a bit of an anomaly, but our city is doing this with internal staff, so all of the review of the bylaw, all of that is being handled in-house instead of contracting that out. That's saving the city about $1 million. And that won't be reflected in a budget, because it's not money that we're reducing, it's money that we're not spending. So that effort alone will save money, but it'll also mean that the land use bylaw that we create will have more of a local context to it. So there's things even within here that are worth highlighting, but I can't get into all of them today, I just wanted to provide those. And again, the purpose of this is to share with residents and with council the things that we are doing to create value out of your tax dollars. Okay, so in recap then, the City of Medicine Hat, how do we determine, how do we answer this question, are you getting value for your tax dollars? We discussed the community survey and showed that most residents within the city are showing that they feel that they are getting high satisfaction from their city services, and most find that they are getting good value for their taxes. Our parks, recreation, and community development provide greater amenities than compared to other cities. Our police and fire services meet or exceed provincial and national standards. Our roadways in the city are benefiting our, through our annual overlay program, excuse me, and that preventative approach to maintenance, which is allowing for better roads for the city and less maintenance on the roads. Our city has provided a historic level of community support over the last number of years. One of the things not highlighted on here is the level of customer service that our city has provided by responding to requests for information at an exponential level. And then the city continuously is looking for ways to improve and has several plans in the works, as we highlighted on the previous slide. And for more information, citizens are always asking where they can get more information about budget and about taxes. So up on the screen here are some links to areas where you can learn about how your tax is calculated, as well as information about the budget. Also mentioned as well, in our previous 2324 budget, we spent about seven hours worth of time with you in the open, talking about budgets. Within this budget, we'll have spent probably about 22 hours. So we are looking to respond to the desire for information about budgets, to help educate, help people understand what it is that we do and why, in order to answer all those questions that people are having, so. Okay, that was probably the lengthiest section. The next sections will be lengthy, depending on questions from this group, but I'll try to breeze through quicker.
Just before you proceed, we'll have a question from Counselor Robbins.
Yes, thank you through the chair. Actually, I had a question, a couple of questions about this section, so I'll just maybe tell you what page number it's on, or the topic, maybe at the top of the page. And I think there might be need for reference to other people to answer them, not because I don't think you have good answers, but because they're going to know the status. So the first one I had was actually about police services, and the $300,000 annual for two downtown patrol unit community liaison officers. So we've heard about the province spending money in other cities to increase the safety of downtown. There's been several initiatives about this in other places. And so I guess what I want to know is the status of any grants or provincial funding for these two officers, or are these two officers, and the province is being asked for two officers, and so that's four? And so that's my question.
I will pass that on to Chief. Police Chief Al Murphy.
It's a good thing we didn't send you home. Thanks for sticking around.
Thank you, Counselor, and through the chair. It's actually, it's the same two positions, so we're not asking for four. We asked them, we wanted them in the budget, because it's, I think it's a need in our city to augment the service we provide with downtown patrol unit. But you're correct in your statement that the province did provide resources to other municipalities, and that same percentage, if you look at our size, would be about 2.5 officers to equal what the larger cities got. So we asked for two to do that. So we did make a request for the province, we haven't heard anything back since we did so, and that was back in June.
So I'm just curious, and if you don't want to answer it, that's fine, but I know that the chiefs of police get together and talk from time to time. And are there other sort of mid-sized cities like us who are doing any kind of advocacy to the province, to say if Edmonton and Calgary get something, so should we? Or we should get our proportional amount of that money? Because I just remember a conversation with a chief of policing, when the cities push people out, they end up in mid-sized cities. When mid-sized cities push them out, they end up in the rural places that have no capacity to have the resources needed to help and to keep their citizens safe. So I recognize it as a much bigger issue, we're sort of the middle block there, and I'm sure our neighbors would like us to have a plan, so just curious if there's discussion amongst the mid-sized city police chiefs about that.
Yeah, there are. I made the request here for, on behalf of us and through council, is good enough to write the letter on behalf of MSNAP Police Service requesting that funding. I can tell you, like, there was an announcement in the last week and a half where some money to deal with encampments was provided to two larger cities, Lethbridge and Red Deer as well, I believe. So I feel, and I'm biased, and I'm obviously selfish to how I feel about our city, I don't understand why we're not included in those things, and it frustrates me, because I hear you say this, and I feel the same way, that at times, we feel in our municipality that things get down loaded upon our municipality, and that's how I feel about it, and why we can't get any play to get any help like others have gotten. I don't understand that, if I can be honest with you.
That's fair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Murphy. Yep, go ahead.
All right, I had a question about the briefing note, but I think I'm going to save it till the end, because the answer probably will come out of the conversation. I did have a question about fire and emergency services, because we approved additional firefighter positions, and one of the things that we talked about, or one of the things, at least in my mind, if I'm wrong, please someone tell me I was wrong, that we were balancing off overtime costs by having larger platoons, so that when the platoon was missing a couple people on holidays or training, or injury or whatever was required, that they would have enough to be able to continue to do their work. So I wonder if there had been any, if those positions had added any cost savings of overtime amount? And that's an operational issue, I don't need to get into the weeds, but has, if that's the case, has it been put into this budget, those overtime savings cost? Do they, if they weren't realized, or they were realized, how has it affected the new budget? I don't think that's an operational question, but that was when we were discussing the new positions and agreeing to them, that was part of sort of what affected at least my decision.
Thank you for the question. The amount of overtime between 2022 and 2025, we're noting reductions in overtime of about $228,000. So that's a bit of a benchmark as a result of those seven new firefighter positions that have come online. As for the delta in our current budget, I wouldn't know off the top of my head, I would have to go and take a deeper dive. It could be possible that those were budget overages in previous years that weren't captured in the budget, so I would have to do a little more digging to, just to discern if we've made a reduction this year in our 2025 budget.
Okay, thank you. I think you've answered enough of the question for me to be satisfied with the answer as it is. I just wonder, if it did have, what you're telling me is it did have an effect, and the people who've put the budget numbers for fire services have that in their mind when they're preparing their budget? So that's all I really wondered about. And then my final question in this section was, I think it's in this section, hold on, did we get past slide 24? We did, didn't we? I'm looking at the pie chart, understanding your taxes. We passed that one? Yes, okay, good.
Yes, we went past the pie.
You went past the pie, okay. It's getting close to snack time, I think, I'm getting a bit peckish, but there you go. So I was looking at other city websites to see how they explain where their tax dollars go, and how we compare it to other cities of similar sizes, just Googling as one does. And the way that our pie chart is created, it's dollars per resident, as opposed to tax dollars, if you know what I mean. Like the City of Grand Prairie says, per $100,000 value of your home, you pay whatever it is, $900 of taxes per year, and then they do it per year, another city did it by the month. And I like the looney, I like knowing where money is going, but I'm not sure how this relates necessarily to tax dollars when it's divided by resident. Do you know what I'm saying? So I couldn't say, I mean, I could say I have three people in my household, I guess, but I don't quite get the connection between this particular type of pie chart as opposed to tax dollars, when this is the cost per resident. Anyway, I'm just struggling a little bit with it, and I think if I'm struggling with that, maybe citizens looking at that may have some trouble as well. So what I'm going to do is click on the property tax assessment link there and see if that sort of clarifies for me. I just thought there might be a simpler way to really, I'll give an example, I think Calgary says, you know, here's your tax bill, and a certain amount of it goes to government, and I think that we do the same thing if I click this link. Director Barta's saying, yes, you could have just done that. But I just really, because we're getting the chart here, and I just want to know if other people are like, okay, well, that's per resident, what else can I find out from the city? What other resources could they give a Google on their own to get the information to really understand their tax bill?
Director Barta?
Yeah, if I could address that through the chair. That, if you do go to that link, we did add a property tax calculator, where you can put in the value of your home, and it will calculate the amount that goes to each of these services. So I would encourage you to go to that link and play around with it, and that should provide you with the information that you're looking for.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that the citizens of Medicine Hat were aware that they could do that, and just highlight that this is not your tax bill demonstrated here, but it's per resident cost demonstrated here. Okay, thank you.
Just before we continue, I don't know, Managing Director Hyder, did you have any follow-up you wanted to make regarding the fire delta that we were talking about? No? Okay. Mr. Heimer, continue.
Okay, thank you. Try to go through this section, and perhaps at the end of this section would be a good time to look at if we'd like to take a break.
Yeah, and I just flipped back to Teams, and I see that Mayor Clark has a question.
Thank you, Counselor Dumanowski, and through the chair. I had similar questions about the understanding your taxes circle. I think this is important, but I think it would also be helpful to see, like, percentage-wise of our entire revenue, or of our entire tax dollars, how much is spent? Because I noticed transit is broken out of community services, I'm not sure why that is. I know fire services is as well, parks and recreation, but some things are clumped together. And, you know, transit at $72 per resident, it could be a bit misleading, because the people who use transit need transit, and so, and it's sort of an essential service of a city, so it's, it could tend, I know we did this kind of calculation with respect to recreation centers, et cetera. I just, I think that, like, the pie chart of transit, I don't know what that relates to as our total tax income, and I think that would be helpful. Not that this isn't, it's just kind of maybe good to see it from multiple perspectives, at least for me. And also being able to look up your tax assessment and tax, like, just with your address on the city website is awesome. So thank you to Lola.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heimer. I believe we will continue for the moment anyway, we'll take a break maybe in a little bit here. Are you okay with that? Okay, continue.
Great, thank you very much. The next section that we'll look at is the discussion of the budget gap, which is one of the main fiscal anchors that we use when we're talking about our municipal budget. It's something that we've been tracking for quite a number of years. It's been a concerted effort of many councils to find answers to closing the budget gap. And within this budget, we are proposing a path to balance by 2028. The municipal budget gap has reached a, the closest point that it has reached to close was in 2020, just before the pandemic, but since then, has been on somewhat of a declining pattern. In 2020, the budget gap reached its closest point, that was at 6.3 million, largely because of deep cuts that were made to this organization that quelled expense growth. But since then, the budget gap has been on somewhat of a downward trend. And what is contributing to this downward trend? It's a complex issue, it's not just one thing, so I want to try my best to provide some context for that, to help understand what has happened over the last four years. Since then, we have had a pandemic, which has fundamentally changed the way that our organization operates. We've seen trends from the pandemic regarding the way we use technology, our needs on a human resource perspective, as well as maybe tangential to that, but some environmental concerns, the need and desire for strategic management and better data and better analysis. These have all led to fundamental changes within our organization. Since those deep cuts were made, there are also several things that we can point to that have been reversed. Some of the more notable ones, maybe for residents, would be the Moose and Crestwood Rec Centers, which were both attempts during that time to reduce the gap by closing those facilities, those have since been reopened with an estimated cost of about $1 million per year. The rising cost of living has caused the need for the city to respond to record-high community supports, as we mentioned before. For example, the opportunity cost on something like the 33.2 million that we provided, the amount of forgone investment revenue, as a result of providing that money back to the residents of the city, is about a 1.5% tax increase. So it's a significant investment, opportunity cost, of course, it was never something baked into a budget, but these kind of things can have an impact on the position that we are in today. We've also seen, since the pandemic, record-high inflation as well, which has impacted the costs to provide the same sorts of services to residents that we have seen in the past, and things have fundamentally changed. We've already talked about efforts to bring our fire and emergency services up to national standards with the introduction of seven new firefighters in the 2324 budget. These things have an impact on our overall budget gap as well. So some of the things that we've already sort of discussed are community supports as well as new initiatives and frameworks, which, as we ask to do new things or have new initiatives on the go, these things add to the costs of providing services to residents. Some of the other things, though, that we are seeing more on a revenue side that have impacted the budget gap, forgone property tax revenue during the pandemic. We mentioned that one already. That has about a $7.5 million delta on our budget gap. That's reduced revenue that we have forgone, that was a part of the original plans, increase of 4% per year during 2020, 2021, and 2022. So those reductions have impacted our budget gap. We've also seen forgone support from the provincial government as well, which I'll highlight on a slide next. And then reductions to investment earnings. This one is a little bit more recent, more for the 2526 budget. We have seen an increase since 2020 in the amount of investment income as a result of some of the efforts during that period of time to increase revenue through moving from a more fixed income model of investment earnings to looking at alternatives and equities and higher risk but higher reward alternatives for investment. That has been exceedingly beneficial to the City of Medicine Hat. However, it comes with an increased level of volatility as well, which is part of what we're seeing in the 2526 budget. On the expense side, as I mentioned before, high inflation levels. We call it catch-up inflation because, as many have noted in some of the more recent CPI indicators are showing that inflation is on a downward trend. I like the example of the used car, though, for example. If you tried to buy a used car, I heard on the radio the other day that a used car is averaging somewhere around $35,000 now to purchase. And what they're saying is that, you know, that that cost is here to stay. And I think about that with inflation is, we've seen inflation at a high for the last number of years. That cost is here to stay. Whether or not the increase is slowing down, that cost is here to stay. So in the last couple of budgets, the amount that we've budgeted for inflation has been less than what we have actually seen in inflation. And so there's a need in this budget for us to catch up.
Do you want to just touch on that last point and then I'll recognize Councilor Van Dyke?
Sure. And then the final one, I will just provide a little bit more detail to in previous slides is budget amendments and how some of those budget amendments that we fund through reserve end up becoming things that in future years, we have to fund through tax.
Okay. Councilor Van Dyke?
Yes, thank you through the chair. I'm wondering if someone could just give us the approximate value, annual value of the reduced provincial revenues. So the change in funding from MSI and the reduced grants in place of taxes, do you happen to have an annual figure that you could share? I know we've had it come before us before, but I think it's important, maybe for the public to know too, how significant the revenue drop is from our provincial funding.
City Manager Mitchell?
Thank you. And through the chair, just for clarification, I think it's changed from MSI to LGFF and also the loss of revenue, 50% of grants in lieu of taxes. So can you, do you want to address that, Erin? Thank you.
I can speak to that. I do have a slide on that a little bit later. But some of it is a little bit difficult for us within the city with the way that funding comes to us to be able to truly quantify. One of the things we know is that on an annual basis, we're seeing about a $750,000 drop just from our property tax revenue. So the way that the provincial government in 2019, they used to pay what an average resident would pay for their property within the city for property tax, they would do it through what they call a grants in place of tax. During 2019, they decided to move to a 50%. So they're providing half of what the average resident would pay for the same property value. And as a result, the city is losing about $750,000, and that would have been since 2019. There have been other things, though, I'll mention, that are a little bit of, I'd say, a good news story in some ways. The provincial government in the past had introduced a debt interest level that was, they moved it from a preferential rate up to more of a market rate. And in the last couple of months, they have reversed that decision and now are providing a preferential rate back to the City of Medicine Hat. That impact on the debt that we've issued between the time that that rate changed and now, that's locked in. So we have, I think, I can't remember exactly the number, but it's a couple hundred thousand a year that we're paying that we would not have paid if that rate had stayed at a preferential rate. But going forward now, that won't be an issue. One of the things that's really a little bit difficult to quantify is the impact on fine revenue. So we, as a municipality, for the work that police does, there is revenue that comes back to the city with relation to fines and things of that nature. So that revenue comes back to the city, but it comes, only a portion of it comes back. And during, in 2019, the province changed the share that they keep from 30 to 40%. So that has had an impact definitely on our budget. We've waited a couple of years through COVID to try to fully understand what the impact of that will be. There's other pressures on our fine revenue as well. Some of the provincial legislation to change photo radar, making photo radar vehicles more visible, has noted drop of about 84% in our violation issued between 2021 and 2023. So these things have immense impact on our fine revenue budget. In this budget alone, we are adjusting our expectations for fine revenue down about $500,000.
Mr. Heimer, before you proceed with the detailed pressures, I'm wondering if we have any objection to taking a short recess for a late refreshment and bathroom break? Any objections? Okay, we're going to recess for 20 minutes.
All right, we're going to reconvene the meeting. Thank you everyone for your patience. Mr. Heimer, we're gonna move along, so continue on, I believe, on slide 28.
Okay, thank you very much. Just to come back to a question that Counselor Van Dyke had asked, I did provide some detail about the question, but the question was really, what is the annual impact of some of the revenue and cost downloads that we've been seeing from the province? Our estimate is somewhere around $1.4 million per year. I would say that's probably on the low side, because I think that we're not fully aware of the impact of some of the, especially related to the loss of photo radar revenue and how that's impacted our budget. So, but the main thing is that in this budget cycle, we are adjusting about $500,000 from the 24 budget to account for that. Other impacts have been a part of previous budgets. Okay, I'm gonna go a bit quicker through these next slides. A lot of these things, this council has seen before. The reason I'm bringing it all together is to try to tell the story of this right here. So why are we seeing this declining picture between 2020 and 2024? Because that declining picture is part of the context of, well, how are we going to reverse that trend going into 2025 and forward? So what we've noted is that it's true that some of the efforts that we've made in 2020 with some of the deep cuts have been reversed. We talked about Crestwood and Moose, but there are others as well. The one thing that we have learned is that it's very difficult for us as a municipality to change our budget and change the resources that we're putting towards services without changing also the expectation of residents of what services are being provided. Because what ends up happening is there's a lower quality of service, or there's a missing link in the service that they're expecting, and then we receive complaints, and we look to try to fix those things, and we fix those things by reinstating what we had in the first place. So this is part of that effort, as we talked about the $2 million service level reduction target that we've set for 2026. As a city, we've taken the time, we talked about at the rate-based utilities at the beginning, some of the efforts that administration has made to cut, and I'll go over some of those again here as well, very quickly. But we've done what we think we can to, in the time that we have, to cut the budget, to make it as lean as possible in order to provide the services that residents are expecting without reducing those service levels. So we think that the next stage is a review of our service levels, and looking for ways that we can potentially cut some of those services and have that agreement so that when those service levels are cut, then those things will remain in place. Within the organization as well, we're always looking for ways to reduce costs. So some of those efforts, like, for example, information technology, we turned to an IT-as-a-service model back, coming out of the Financially Fit Initiative, that's still remained in place. We're saving about $250,000 annually doing that. We talked about the land use bylaw, the way that we're saving the city close to $1 million by doing that work in-house and providing a better quality product as well. But we're doing things all the time, and I'd love to go into some of those examples of the things that we're doing, if that's a direction the council would like to go. But for now, I will go through this budget gap section, and if I'm going too quickly, or if you have questions, please slow, just, you know, interject and ask your questions. As I said, we've seen most of these pictures before, so I don't think that I need to belabor them, but it's worth reiterating these messages because they tell that contextual story. On the property tax side, as we mentioned before, us, like many other municipalities, reduced our property tax during the pandemic as a way of helping residents. This was necessary at the time. However, now we are facing a budget gap approximately about $7.5 million. And as you can see, all other municipalities have since that point increased their property tax revenue. When we look at the chart that shows 2024 through 2026, what you will note is that Medicine Hat remains in 2024, we're one of the lowest. We haven't recovered that $7.5 million. Other municipalities have made efforts to claw back or to increase revenues in this 2024, but also looking into '25 and '26 to offset some of the impact of that foregone revenue. The other thing that we mentioned as well is that within our electric generation earnings are on a declining trend. With that comes less earnings. Less earnings means less money going into reserves in the form of dividends. Our reserves is what fuels our investment income. Investment income is used by the city to offset property taxes. So if we have lower money going in, but we continue to pull the same amount out of the reserves, we will see cash draws, and that's certainly what we're seeing over the medium-term horizon for the City of Medicine Hat, is that we are in a situation where we're expecting our cash to be on a downward decline for at least the next seven years. With that comes less investment income, and less investment income means more pressure on our property tax. So there is that picture of the investment Again, these are just preliminary portfolio balance figures, but it gives you an idea of where that investment portfolio will be in comparison to where we think our minimum threshold is. We're getting relatively close in those later years. And what we're seeing is that this is resulting in a net change in our investment earnings of about $3.7 million between 2024 and 2026. With regard to the provincial operating revenue, between 2019 and 2024, it's estimated that provincial revenue reductions will amount to about $4.7 million. And before the break, we went over some of those major drivers, including fine revenue, property tax, and debt. On the capital side, we didn't talk about the provincial capital funding, so there's two sides. There's the operating, which impacts our municipal budget gap, but the less known side is the capital side. This is where we receive our major grant funding from the province, the major one being the local government fiscal framework. And as you can see on the slide here, the local government fiscal framework has had an average amount of about $11.1 million per year that it's provided to the city in the form of capital funds. And over the next couple of years here, as you can see, there's a drop where we do not exceed $9.5 million from the local government fiscal framework. Capital funding has dropped in total from these two sources of about $2.6 million per year, or 16.8% when compared to the 10-year average. This is particularly impactful to see that we have two concurrent trends. On the one side, we have reduced capital funding from the province. On the other side, we're seeing an exponential increase to the cost of our capital. So these are examples we provided back in April. And again, what we've mentioned before is that these costs are here to stay. We are seeing a slowdown. In some cases, I believe there are a few instances where we have seen minor declines in some of these costs, but for the most part, these costs are here to stay. And that's what we're experiencing currently and what has been reflected in the '25-'26 budget. On the expense pressure side, I do want to note that the QP salary negotiations that took place for '23-'24, we had a budget of 2.5% increase to salary wages during that time. The 2023 QP negotiation negotiated an increase to all QP employees of about $1.55 per hour. And when you work out the math, any employee that makes less than, say, $129,000 within our QP family would have received higher than that 2.5% inflationary adjustment that we had in the budget. So this is part of that catch-up inflation that we were mentioning before. It's estimated that this would have about a $900,000 impact on our '25-'26 budget, or approximately a 1% increase to tax. Looking at budget amendments, it's important to note that budget amendments in the 2024 budget roll over into the '25-'26 budget. Many of these things were paid for through paid for through operating reserves, so when we roll them into the '25-'26 budget, this now becomes a tax obligation that we have to pay for. I'll just note as well, some of these are not ongoing. HALO, for example, is not an ongoing cost. We have taken that out of the '25-'26 budget with the request that HALO come back and provide a new request for funding. So even though it's out, it's not included in the '25-'26 budget, it could be a pressure in the future, as well as the 1.2 million in fair entry relief credits that has also been taken out. With those things in mind, there's still about $746,000 of cost here that rolls into our operating budget, or about a 1% tax increase. Looking at the capital budget amendments, this is just on the municipal side. It's just worth mentioning here that, like on the operating side, capital budget amendments do place a pressure on our budget, but in a different way. When we utilize reserve funding, for example, that's less funding in our reserves that we can earn interest off of. So this does put a bit of pressure on the budget as well. Looking at the capital budget amendments that are not municipal, these do also put a draw on the on the budget as well. There's about $48 or $49 million of capital budget amendments here. If we ignore for a second the $33 million for the electric generation, which is really just a timing thing where we needed to get the approval now for a purchase in the future, there's still about $12.7 million draw on our capital, or an opportunity cost of about a half a percentage point for tax. Looking at the community grants side as well, we have seen increases here. We're just highlighting as well that community grants have been a pressure on the budget in the past and continue to be into the future. We just had a presentation yesterday from our Medicine Hat Stampede. So even though we have in our budget $7.7 million, that number can grow quite quickly. Between 2019 and 2024, we've paid about $21.7 million in community grants to community organizations, such as our library, Medalta, SPCA, YMCA, Special Olympics, and other various festival grants. The demand for the city to support the community through grants is growing. We're seeing exceeding pressure on some of our formal grant programs, including FCSS, for example. So this will continue to be a trend and could attract future budget amendments. So it's just something that we've noted that has been part of this declining trend in the budget gap. Some of the efforts that we have made in this budget, we've mentioned these before, so I won't belabor them, but we have a $2 million service level reduction included, $5 million funding from our Medicine Hat Endowment Fund, $3 million business unit dividend, $1.9 million related to keeping our budgets at 2024 levels but for unavoidable increases, and then absorbing the cost of inflation on capital projects, like the road rehabilitation program that I had mentioned earlier. Additional citywide cost-cutting measures, these were the efforts that administration took in September to reduce the budget ask. This includes $8 million in reductions of growth capital, $4.8 million reduction in sustaining capital, $11.7 million reduction in the use of capital reserve funding, $200,000 reduction in our new operating initiatives, $2.6 million reduction in base operating expenses, and $600,000 of additional revenue. I will, with the revenue one, we have reduced that now to about $235,000 with some recent information that we've received from the province about that one. So that one has been adjusted slightly, but the rest of these remain in our budget recommendation. It should be noted as well that the new operating initiatives that we have proposed to you have, we did go back and look for offsets within the organization, so these are opportunities where we found vacant positions within the organization, where we said if we needed to, we could find other ways to do that. If it meant reprioritizing those FTEs to more needed areas, which are indicated in our new operating initiatives.
I'm just gonna interrupt. Mayor Clark has a question.
Thank you so much, and again, I'm sorry if I missed it, but can I see this slide that you just had up? It referenced original ask of 10 positions. What did that mean?
The original ask of 10 FTEs was part of the New Growth Operating Initiatives budget series back in June and July. So with the new growth opportunities that we were recommending at that time, we had indicated the need for 10 new FTE positions. And since then, we've come back as a team and found an offset of 10 positions that we could repurpose to, towards those efforts.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Moving right along then. I will jump into the key assumptions and keep moving at a good pace. So with the municipal budget development process, just to highlight on how we go about developing the budget, we start with the 2024 budget as our baseline. We then apply to it what we call our key budget assumptions, which is what I'll go over in the next slide. Those key budget assumptions are presented to council in April to get an early indication of alignment, so that as we go through the budget development, we've created some alignment on where we're headed. After that, we work with the organization to identify certain unavoidable cost pressures. These are areas where, even within the limitations of the key budget assumptions, they are not able to maintain within the budgets provided. We do give opportunities for the organization, department directors and managers to reallocate costs within their areas where needed, and then where, even with those efforts to find mitigation and within their operations, where they are not able to sustain, they will apply for a cost pressure. We use a form that they fill out, where they provide a justification, and then those are reviewed by our administration managing directors, and they will go through them on a case-by-case basis and recommend which ones are unavoidable. Then we also look at new operating initiatives. Each director has the opportunity to fill out a business case justifying what it is that they are looking to do, and we go through a process of vetting to make sure that new operating initiatives are discretionary in nature. So it doesn't mean that there isn't risk in not doing them, it just means that we do have a choice. And understanding those opportunity costs, I understand, was part of, in June and July, some of the information that we were trying to provide by opening the floor to all the directors of the city and having them here available to you to discuss those business cases. Then we look at our business unit revenue, so this is one of the next things that we do. We calculate our utility rates, we calculate what we're expecting to earn from energy production, and that informs what we think that our investment portfolio balance is going to be. And then we can calculate our investment revenue, which is one of the last areas in our budget. The next stage is the gap mitigation efforts, and that is what we did in September and is reflective in the information I shared just in the last slide about the cuts that we've made to this budget. And then after that, we come to a settlement on where our budget gap is and what our recommendation for property taxes, and that's how we come to our budget. We also have a number of fiscal objectives that we seek to maintain. This year, we have introduced three main fiscal targets for financial sustainability, which include a debt level, a cash target, and a budget gap target. These targets, for us to be successful in balancing the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow, are maintained over a 10-year planning horizon that we work into our financial model. And all decisions made in this budget cycle will meet those targets within the 10-year financial picture. And going forward, I would recommend that, as council is making decision about big-ticket items like the Stampede, Facilities for the Future, Energy Transition, that we continue to look back at these fiscal anchors as a way of helping us to understand what it is that we can afford, and that we would look in some of these bigger asks to demonstrate financial sustainability. So with the thoughtful use of reserves, in this budget, we have recommended to you over the last number of months the creation of an abandonment reserve, as well as an energy transition reserve. But we've also considered how we should use our reserves to help the resident. We've included $5 million of Medicine Hat Endowment funding, $3 million of business unit dividends that would otherwise flow to the reserves, as well as what we'll see shortly, is $17 million in operating reserve funding to fund the budget gap over a two-year period. To reduce the risk of, financial risk and volatility, we are starting with $5 million endowment funding and $3 million of business unit dividends, as well as the $17 million of operating reserve funding. But over the medium-term horizon, we are suggesting that the level of exposure that the city has to volatile business earnings is too high, and we need to look at ways over the long or the medium term to reduce that impact. And part of our efforts to do that is the property tax recommendation to bring us back up to balance by 2028, as well as our commitment to residents. That's the other fiscal objective that we look to manage, and that is through providing steady predictable tax increases. We're not promising 0% tax increases, but what we want to do is we want to smooth the impact of tax increases over time to avoid an unexpected spike in property tax that a resident isn't expecting. As well as balancing the needs for affordability and the need to invest in city infrastructure, we recognize that the cost of city services can't just merely be lumped onto the taxpayer. There needs to be a balance and right sizing of municipal services for the community to strike that balance between taxes and the benefits that residents receive to our community. We do believe that this budget recommendation we're providing to you today strikes that balance. Looking at our key budget assumptions, I'll just highlight some of the things that have changed for you here, instead of going through all of them. On the property tax side, we have made an adjustment to our expected assessable growth in 2025. Accessible growth is that component of our property tax revenue increase that comes from new developments coming online, which means that it doesn't necessarily need to be revenues that are coming from our current tax base, it can be new properties coming online. We're seeing a number of things in our planning horizon that are indicating that we're going to have very low growth, assessable growth, coming online in 2025. Part of that is a slowing down of our development within the city. Part of that is a couple of different items where things that are now taxable may become exempt within the next little while. So that's a little bit vague, but on purpose, just for not bringing certain individuals or companies into this meeting or into the public. So that's the main change that we're seeing here in our budget assumptions. These are just a couple other assumptions that we set, more on the funding side. So we did have a cost pressure of $11 million. That was our unavoidable cost pressures that we were anticipating. These are essentially the way I think about cost pressures are the parts of the budget that a manager within the city has the ability to impact, like your revenues or your expenses. So those pieces, here we had an estimated $11 million. Through the efforts of administration, we have been able to reduce that down to $8.2 million. So we have stayed within our target for cost pressures within this budget.
We have a question from Counselor McGrogan.
Thank you, and through the chair, the last slide, I just want to make sure I've got it right. You're saying assessable growth in 2025, we don't expect any assessable growth, like zero.
Correct.
No new buildings coming on, no multifamily units, no... It seems pretty bleak, unless I'm, am I reading the room right here?
It, sort of. What we're saying is that the modest amount of growth that we are experiencing is going to be offset by some of these these other disputes that are going on with regard to exemption. So some of those things will offset the new assessable growth coming online. So overall, we're expecting there to be a zero net, but that's not to say there isn't some properties that are coming online in 2025. The other one here is just the municipal budget gap. So as we mentioned before, in April, we had come with a plan to balance the budget by the end of 2026. Since then, with some of the updates to assumptions and primarily in our investment revenue, excuse me, we are seeing that balancing the budget gap by 2026 would require a significant increase to taxes, which we feel does not meet the mandate of our budget commitment towards steady predictable tax increases. It would be too high of a spike. So what we're suggesting is that instead of closing the budget gap by 2026, that we extend that out to 2028. is that instead of closing the budget gap by 2026, that we extend that out to 2028, and in that way, we are able to keep our original recommendation of around 5.6% tax increase for '25 and '26.
We have a question from Council Knodel.
Thank you, Council Dumanowski. I'm just curious if you can remind the community what this tax increase equates to approximately for the average household.
For the average household, yes.
Per month or per year, annually or monthly?
So within this budget, and I'll come back to that specifically in a later slide, but to answer the question, the recommendation that we're putting forward would equate to about a $10 increase per month in '25 and then another 10 in '26 for the average resident.
Thank you.
Okay. Looking at our operating budget then, this is the section where we get into the actual operating budget. So on the operating budget side, the revenues that we're experiencing are increasing by about 2.7% annually, even though property tax is estimated to increase by 5.6%. The property tax increase is being offset in this budget by a decline in our revenue between 2024 and 2026 of about $4.5 million, primarily due to two factors, one being reduced portfolio balance as a result of electric generation earnings, as well as other areas not providing dividends during '25, '26, or lower dividends rather. And on the other side, too, we do have a more modest investment return expectation. What we've noted from the last number of years is that our investment earning target has been too high because of the need to meet the accounting standard to only record revenue when it is realized. We are, for example, right now experiencing about a 9.6%, I believe it's 9.6% year-to-date on our investment portfolio. However, what is realized is quite a bit less than that. So the difference between what is our total return and what we consider our realized return is not reflected in these numbers here. And just to give a bit of a quick on what is realized, essentially, we only realize investment income when we sell. So if you own a stock in, say, Disney, and it goes up 100% in a year, but you hold on to that stock and you don't sell it, you earn $0 in realized investment earnings. The second that you sell the stock, it hits the books as revenue. So that's kind of how... This is a simplified example of a complicated area of accounting, but that's kind of how it works. So what we're noticing is that on average, we're only realizing historically about 65% of what we're actually earning. That fluctuates so much, and it's a very difficult thing to estimate because the timing of when you sell things is influenced by so many different factors. But for us, we've kind of settled on a 65% of our overall investment earnings is kind of our target. And with that, we're showing a lower overall investment earning percentage than in previous years. So those two factors are playing on our investment earnings. Within revenue, we're also seeing, as I mentioned before, a decline in our fine revenue from the province of about $500,000. And the other one is a decrease in our permit and development fee revenue compared to previous budgets. Part of this is due to a historical slowdown in our development activity within the city that's been experienced over, you know, over the last five, 10 years. The last time that we were doing budgets was during the pandemic, and we did see a decline at that point in some of the revenues that we were experiencing. However, it was difficult to tell whether that was an anomaly or not, so we kept the budgets at the same level. But now we are seeing that this is a concurrent trend, and we have adjusted that permit and development fee revenue accordingly. So it's about a $500,000 hit to our budget as well. On the base operating expense side, expense increase is about 3.1% annually. The primary jump here is our key budget assumptions. So while we kept most expenses at zero, we provided a 2.25% increase for benefits, or sorry, for salary in '25 and 2% in 2026. So those increases, just to salaries alone, of 2.25 and 2% respectively, increases the overall budget by about $5.2 million between 2024 and 2026. The other increases that we're experiencing on that side, as I mentioned earlier, pressures related to readjusting salaries for the QP increases that we saw. We've also had a number of major budget resets on the salary side, which I'll get into in the next slide. And then there are some other increases that we consider to be unavoidable, including about $600,000 in information technology related to software licensing and inflationary pressures. There's about a $1 million increase in fleet and facility costs, building maintenance, as well as vehicle maintenance, costs related to service, and that's just to bring us back in line with historical levels. And that's where I would say we're experiencing the largest levels of inflation within the organization that are visible within our budget. And then salary budget adjustments, as I mentioned before. On the new operating initiative side, this is where I'll direct you to your briefing note. There is a breakdown, line by line, of all of the new operating initiatives, and I'll touch on them briefly on a slide to come. On the other expenses side, this is things like investment fee, management fees, investment or interest expense on debt, as well as amortization. And there's only a bit of a modest swing in that area as well. On the net internal recoveries, internal charges side, you will note that we are seeing a decline in overall net internal recoveries compared to the 2024 budget. Part of this is because some of the costs that we're seeing come online in the new budget are not reallocated, they're within our fire, within our public service areas, police areas, which we don't reallocate to other areas within the city. So that's part of the reason why that is going down. There's other things as well. When we set our net internal recoveries, we're basing them off of certain cost drivers. So for example, one of the largest ones that has shifted this year is purchase orders. So we have a purchasing department that provides purchasing services for the whole city. We use the number of or the value of those purchase orders as an indicator of how to allocate that cost. And what we're seeing is that more of that is shifting towards the municipality and less away from other areas like water, sewer, solid waste. And so for those reasons, we're seeing a shift there. We're also seeing a reduction in fleet lease costs as well. So all of these things are based on annual schedules that we put together as part of our intention to try to be a little more objective with the way that we're managing these net internal recoveries. So a lot of these things are just shifts in the way that things are happening and activities are happening within our organization. On the transfers to reserve, the main driver of the favorable increase is that $5 million from Medicine Hat Endowment funding. And then the favorable on the cash adjustments, this is primarily related to things like debt principal repayments and the amount that we are collecting from taxes to pay for capital projects. And we're seeing a slight decline of about $1 million to those costs, which is helping our municipal budget. Any questions on the operating budget?
Council Bendig.
Thank you, sir. I'm having problems with buttons this evening here. So I had a question regarding some of the assumptions made. So like assessment, growth, we have workforce strategy being worked on, service level being worked on. If those are completed in the next, say, six months, and those numbers change, will we alter the expected property tax increase for the 2026 budget year? Or will it remain the same for 2026, and it'll be the next budget cycle that we see the change in?
Thank you for the question. We do have the opportunity, as we have in previous budget cycles, to do an interim budget update. So that would be an option available to us. It's something that we would recommend is to look at. We do have a number of efforts, like the workforce strategy, the service level reduction, that we're setting a benchmark now and saying, if but for any further changes, this is what we would need to collect as tax. We can look in 2025 and put focus on our efforts in 2025 to find ways to reduce, and if we could, that we could potentially alleviate some of the pressure on 2026. One of the efforts that we did this year, we realigned our focus from permanent employees to what we call FTE. PEP has been longstanding for decades within Medicine Hat, a term that has been utilized. Permanent employee is a headcount of the number of people who hold permanent positions within the city. This sometimes causes confusion when we talk about budgets because you can have a decrease in the number of permanent positions, but an increase in the budget because you're bringing in more temporary positions. And sometimes it becomes very difficult to understand the holistic salary and wage picture when you're just looking at the permanent employee side of things. What we did this year was we went through an effort of realignment to focus less on the permanent employee headcount and focus more on a total FTE. That'll give a more holistic picture. We've reevaluated. We haven't done this in the past, so we've reevaluated what our FTE budget looks like. We went back to the organization, talked to department directors, and asked about, you know, what is your actual FTE counts and what are you utilizing? And we looked at the data that we have from our time cards and tried to use that to come up with, well, what is our true budget picture for the whole organization? And there's a few areas of note where we had some areas that we needed to adjust, especially on the temporary side. One of the notable areas would have been in our parks and recreation area. So parks and recreation, the way that we would do temporary budgets in the past is we would look at what the utilization of those positions are in the prior year. So we would always have a bit of a time lag to figure out what our temporary budgets look like. And especially in parks and recreation, last budget cycle, it was 2022 when we were finalizing the budget, and 2021 was the year prior. Well, there was a pandemic happening at that point. And so the level of temporary employees that we had budgeted was quite low. So in this budget, we've realigned that. We went back and we looked at, we went to 2023, so that is probably more of a representative year. We've completely looked at the way that we're calculating FTEs differently, and we've come up with a more realistic picture that we feel that we can settle on as kind of a baseline or a benchmark for what our FTE count is for this budget and then for future budgets as well. Part of that effort as well, we reviewed all of our union negotiations to determine if there were certain areas where there were supplemental pay types that weren't being captured in our budget to make our budget more sophisticated and more accurate. And we did come across a couple of areas where our budget was insufficient. One of the main areas of note is in our fire and emergency services. Fire and emergency services have union negotiated supplemental pay for what they call service pay, as well as holiday pay. So holiday pay is a supplement that is provided in place of paying out stat. As a normal employee would get stat pay. Instead, most firefighters, as well as a number of shift workers and police as well, have to work during stats, and so they receive a minor top-up to their salary. And so we've captured that now in the budget, as well as the service pay, which is increased to pay once you've reached a certain number of years of seniority. So with those updates, we've also updated our police budget. So our police budget benefit rate was not reflective of the actual benefit rate for police services. So we reviewed historical police service benefit rates compared to salaries and wages, and we've increased from 20% up to 24.25% within this budget. So that does place some pressure on the budget to make these adjustments. But what we're seeing, especially if you're following the triennial reporting, fire and emergency services, parks, police, these are all the areas where we're seeing unfavorable budget. And so this is really to realign and make those budgets more accurate. It's not new costs. We're not paying people more. We're really just realigning those budgets to make them more accurate and more realistic. If a budget is not realistic, it cannot be managed within. It fails as a financial control tool. So those are just some things to note there. New operating initiatives, again, I'll direct you to your briefing note that has the appendix with all of the new operating initiatives within it. The main thing I just want to highlight here is that within this budget, we have new operating initiatives. We are looking to invest $6.3 million into council strategic priorities in 2025, as well as $2.8 million in 2026. Some of the major items include traffic safety enhancements, transit service upgrades, development incentives within economic development, the downtown patrol units personnel, advanced collaboration ecosystem, which we talked about when we talked about the communications section, cybersecurity maturity program, and our community well-being program. On the capital side then, what we're seeing on the capital side is this budget invests $89.6 million into capital within the organization. That is a drop from the '23-'24 budget of about $4.1 million. Of note is the drop in sustaining capital. And the drop in sustaining capital, what we essentially did was we reset all of our sustaining capital budgets to what was the seven-year average historical spend within those departments. And since that was our starting point, but since then, we've gone through a number of efforts to mitigate cost. And so some of that has resulted in a drop in our sustaining capital budgets. So one of the areas of note here, some of these are reductions, some of them are deferrals. One of the areas where we've decided to defer, which will come up in future budget cycles, is within our airport. There's about a $7 million cost to replace the main runway. We have deferred that to 2027. But those are some of the efforts that we're putting in to be able to keep the costs low during this budget cycle. Okay, jumping into our property tax recommendation then. So our property tax recommendation is a 5.6% tax revenue increase in 2025 and a 5.6% tax increase in 2026. When compared to some of the typical comparator cities that we use, we are seeing that we are coming in lower than the average at the 5.6% rate. And we did do a confidential survey of 22 other municipalities within Alberta, and their 2025 rates are averaging around 6.1%. So our recommendation, which is really coming independently of all of these other recommendations, we did not set this rate based on what we saw others doing. We came to this conclusion organically and happened to be within the same range as what other areas are looking at as well for increases.
All right. We have a question, Council McGorgin.
Yeah, thank you. And through the chair, I just note that Fort Mac's not there. I know the last meeting we asked, or I asked, and there was going to be an effort to include... I see Grand Prairie's in there. Thank you for that, to include Fort Mac as well, because they seem like comparables in many ways to me, being that our geographic isolation and all those other things that make us similar. So I would be curious to see that up there as well, unless there's a reason why it can't. be.
Thank you for the observation. We did try to bring Fort Mac in. We could not find any publicly available information about their forecast.
Okay. I'm going to recognize Managing Director Eger, and then the mayor has a question.
Through the chair, just one comment about Fort McMurray. It is a bit of an outlier in terms of a comparator. I'll say in terms of the industrial versus heavy industrial versus residential. And so definitely, if we do locate it, we could include it, but it may not be a true representative.
All right, Mayor Clark, I'm going to have you wait just one moment. The city manager has a follow-up.
Thank you, through the chair, I'll be quick. And the other thing is, there's an amalgamated municipality of Wood Buffalo, which includes Fort Mac. So there's also the other anomaly of urban versus rural areas as well, too. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. I was just curious why I wasn't there. Now I understand why, thank you.
All right, Mayor Clark.
Thank you very much. My question was actually on the previous slide that says capital at the top. I think you, what I understood you to be saying is that we're deferring some capital investments, and I'm just wondering if you could describe the potential costs and risks of deferring versus the costs and risks of not reducing our budget now?
Thank you for the question. I might defer some of those more specific questions. I believe the question would be more around the airport runway to Managing Director Pat Bohan. But in our efforts to develop this budget, we are weighing the risks of delay, and this, I believe, is one area where we felt that we could, we could delay a little bit longer. Obviously, there is always a risk in delaying certain projects of that nature, whether it be economic or infrastructure. But I maybe will pass it over to Managing Director Bohan to talk a little more about the airport runway decision.
Go ahead, Managing Director Bohan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The decision to defer the runway, the runway is in deteriorating shape and was just a hard decision made by other priorities within the, within the division. So we made that decision for, it was a hard decision to make, but we've asked to defer it to 2027.
Mayor Clark, does that answer your question? Okay, Councilor McGorgin.
Thanks. Just a follow-up question for Managing Director Bohan, if that's all right, city manager. I do recall, there was a time, I think it was Brad Maines, that had talked about a warranty on that runway, and that there were, there was a bit of a, perhaps a dispute over, over, I guess, some resurfacing that had already been done. I'm wondering where that has gone and if it's related to this resurfacing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, this is the cross runway, this is the other runway, the secondary runway that was deferred. We're still continuing to work with the contractors on the previous, on the main runway.
Just while we are on that topic, so the cross runway, thank you for clarifying, because I was, like Councilor McGorgin, thinking it was the, some of the deficiencies for the redo of the main runway. How far into the future were we projecting to redo the cross runway and now there's a delay? So in other words, had we had planned five years in advance to do it, and now we're delaying an additional two, three years? I'm just curious on the timeline associated with the delay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, again, this is a very difficult decision in very austere budget times, and yes, this budget, this was proposed in the last budget cycle as well, and we were just, it needs to be replaced or upgraded, and it was just strictly the sheer dollar amount of actually replacing it now. We should be able to maintain it for another two years. But at that point, we're going to be in a very difficult decision to make.
Just a follow-up then, so I don't know what the regulations are with Navcan or others. Are we in good position, good stead with delaying this runway review or redo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This runway is a critical runway, it's a crosswind runway, it's used for secondary operations. So in terms of compliance, it has been noted by the regulatory bodies, Transport Canada, that we should be looking at replacing and/or that runway soon. So it has been flagged as an area that we need to monitor.
And just quickly, and lastly, are there any grant opportunities largely when we do these projects are significant, I'm going to say significant offsets from other provincial and federal, I think typically federal government? Is that something anticipated as well in the deferral?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes. We employed some contractors to help us with our air service restoration on our airport master plan. They suggested that we do make attempts to get second funding for that secondary runway. It's not a common occurrence, it's not, it's rare, is what we were advised, but that's not going to stop us from making an application.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions, you can continue.
So when we look at our property tax recommendation, the other thing I want to point out, sorry.
I apologize. Mayor Clark does have her hand up.
I apologize, I was a little bit late on the draw there. I guess in light of the NAV Canada thing, and some of the other things you said, I guess I want to re-ask my question about costs and risks. So we have to do this, say we wait two years, and then we're in a pinch, or it breaks down, or whatever. Like what, how does that analysis work? Because it seems like something that's pretty important to economic development and, you know, overall health of our community. Does that make sense?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor Clark, you mentioned the NAV Canada, it's actually Transport Canada, and with your permission, I'm going to hand this over to Manager Boyd to answer. We're getting into an area he's much more of an expert on, so with your permission, I'll pass that over to him.
Absolutely.
Through the chair, hi everyone. Yeah, so we regularly assess all of our priority infrastructure. So looking at our runways here, 927, it is in an older state, but the risk is still low. What we need to keep in mind is that it is actually only used about 15% of the time, and it's actually a lot of our lower-risk traffic that uses the surface. So we're very active in annual maintenance programs. We do pavement repairs when we need to. We just finished about 2,000 meters of cracked ceiling on the runway. We are comfortable it's going to make it through another two years, and again, through regular assessment. If that's going to change, we'll make sure that that's prioritized, and we're doing the repairs we need to.
Thank you.
All right, continue.
Okay, just coming back to the property tax recommendation, the other thing I noted in a previous slide was that when you look at the 2024 property tax recommendation, we are seeing that a lot of other cities have shown increases in 2024. Sorry.
Can we get the slides back up on screen, please?
Thank you. So the, yes, you're seeing many of the other municipalities that increased their taxes in 2024. The City of Medicine Hat maintained its budgetary amount of 4% in line with our efforts between 2019 and 22. We did not increase beyond, beyond our budget to recover some of the forgone tax that was experienced during the years of property tax freeze. So just mentioning a few up here as well, Calgary, for example, was directed by their council to maintain a 3.6 and a 3.1% in '25 and '26, and they have since had to adjust that to 4.6 and 4.1, stating that the target was unachievable. And there's still some time, and there could be additional amendments to that recommendation before the tax level is settled for Calgary. Edmonton as well is experiencing some very high costs, downloaded costs from the province, as well as union pressures and other things as well. They had an 8.9% increase in 2024. They are forecasting a 7% for 2025. However, they have publicly stated that at this point, if they were to make no additional adjustments, they could be upwards of 13% in 2025. So there is some upward pressure on some of these numbers, especially for some of these larger cities. The City of Lethbridge has instituted from 2023 through 2026, a four-year 5.1% increase, and that is to offset the cost of the reductions during the pandemic. And so we're proposing something similar to what Lethbridge did, just a year in delay, with the 5.6% rates through to 2028. Of course, in this budget, we're only looking at '25, '26, and as Councillor Van Dyke had indicated, efforts in the coming year could help us to reduce that property tax requirement out into 2028. From a monthly tax bill perspective, we, this was the slide that I was mentioning to Councillor Knodel earlier, we are seeing at that 5.6% increase level, about a $20 increase per month by the end of 2026, that's two years out from now, about $20 per month, it's $10 per year. If we were to reduce that tax increase to, say, 3.5%, the delta between 5.6 and 3.5 after two years is just, just over $7 there per month. This would be for the median household, so this is a $315,000 single-family dwelling. And so that, that would be essentially what would be experienced by, by a person in that situation. I'll just note here as well that the median household in Medicine Hat is somewhere around $97,000, as well as our Alberta Living Wage Network has really rated Medicine Hat as one of the most affordable cities to live across 15 municipalities that they have surveyed. And the Canada Living Wage Network rated Medicine Hat in 2023 as the second lowest living wage amongst 54 cities that they surveyed in 2023. So our recommendation from administration is for a property tax revenue increase of 5.6% in 2025 and 5.6% as well in 2026. This, we believe, meets our budget commitment to steady predictable tax increases for residents, that this will help us to close our budget gap by 2028, that the municipal business unit should be self-sustaining, and thus, we should be looking to close that budget gap. I think after we've closed that budget gap, we still have further work to do to reduce our risk of, towards our volatile business earnings. However, balancing the municipal budget gap would be the first step in that journey. Investing in new growth opportunities for the city, this budget does invest quite a significant amount into new, new growth opportunities for the city in line with council's strategic priorities, as well as helps to catch up for forgone property tax revenue during the pandemic. So that's why we've recommended a 5.6% tax rate. We believe that this is the right balance, to balance the needs of today with the requirements of tomorrow. Any questions on that?
Mayor Clark.
Thank you very much. So you just mentioned new growth opportunities. Back to the airport discussion, that's not a new growth opportunity, like that's included in our list, but why not?
Thank you for the question. So when we talk about new growth opportunities, there's two sides to that, there's a capital side and an operating side. The airport runway would fall on the growth capital side. However, when we assess whether an item is a sustaining or a growth capital, we have a set of criteria that we apply. One of the main criterias is that the ask needs to be something that is not a part of status quo maintenance of our current infrastructure. It's something that would be new or added to. It needs to be something that is discretionary in nature, which means it gives council some opportunity to say yes or no. It needs to be something that advances council's strategic priorities. So those are some of the criterias that we look at. When we talk about the airport maintenance specifically, that project would be considered a sustaining growth, sorry, a sustaining capital opportunity, primarily because it would be a part of our, replacing our existing infrastructure, so it'd be part of our sustaining capital program.
Mayor Clark, you have a follow-up?
Thank you. I do. I just feel like when council has an opportunity to review all of the capital, potential capital, whether we want to decide it's new growth or something that we just need, I would like to see all of those capital projects and have an opportunity to decide whether we want to do a new growth, or do we want to just have infrastructure, like maintenance infrastructure accelerated?
City Manager Mitchell.
Thank you, through the chair. I think we've had this discussion a few times, but I think that at some point, administration is bringing forward recommendations going through the process, and I do believe a couple of budget meetings ago, we did address this, so I'm not sure if that's, council wants more information or...
Yeah, that doesn't really answer my question. I guess for me, I would, because I, of, you know, being a bit of a penny pincher, I would rather do the infrastructure projects that need to be done within the next three years than something that doesn't necessarily have, like, on a cost benefit analysis, the maintenance is more valuable than the new growth. Like, I think that that analysis would be something that council should consider when determining the budget.
All right, thank you for that comment, Mayor Clark. Obviously, there'll be opportunities to debate the budget at an appropriate time. Tonight, we're here for the presentation, but point well taken. All right, Mr. Heimer, couple more slides.
Yes, we're very close. So with regard to the sustaining capital, the way that we've established our sustaining capital within the organization is, we're bringing forward what we believe to be administration's recommendation for what is required to maintain status quo services. So we have subject matter experts from across the organization who do this work day in, day out, and we would not be putting something out or deferring it into the future if we did not think that it was possible, as we heard from Manager Boyd. The runway is in good shape, in, not great shape, but in good enough shape that there's confidence that it will maintain for the next two years. So that would be the confidence that I would, I would try to instill in the, in the sustaining capital, is that we are doing that risk assessment and providing our recommendation on what needs to come forward in order to ensure that we are maintaining the city's infrastructure. So just moving on then to risks and mitigation efforts, which is our final slide for tonight. Some of the risks that we have as an organization when it comes to our municipal budgets, important to keep these in mind because sometimes it's, it's very difficult to, or easy to lose sight on why our budget gap has gone up or gone down. And these financial risks are some of those key drivers that are going to play havoc on that budget gap that we have to internally, as an organization, respond to. Some things are out of our control, some things are in our control, but nevertheless, we need to respond to them. So some of those things are investment revenue volatility. As we've mentioned, even in this budget cycle, we've seen... As we've mentioned, even in this budget cycle, we've seen a reduction in our overall expected realized earnings. But just recognizing that the way that we have to recognize investment earnings within our budget creates a bit of volatility. Just because it's very difficult to determine, it's easier to determine what our expected total return is, but realized return is something that is a little bit more difficult to put a finger on. And it's something that if we, if we become too focused on it, can, it, it's not a great management tool because we can force the sale of certain equities or properties in order to realize investment earnings before their time. So it's just, it's a bit of a anomaly, but we have to maintain with it because that's the public accounting standard. Cash, declining cash levels, as we showed with the investment chart, we are on a downward trend with our cash levels within the organization. And I'd suggest that as we move forward into two thousand and twenty-five, some of the efforts that we're doing to close the budget gap, to reduce, to reduce costs, to become more disciplined in our approach. Some of those efforts are vital to finding a way to balance out that declining cash level so that we can come back to more of a sustaining position. Overreliance on our business unit earnings, as we've mentioned before, as we're seeing electric generation earnings on a decline. That's what's primarily leading to this decline in cash level because we become reliant on that income in order to maintain status quo services for the city. So to reduce our reliance on that business unit earnings so that, you know, we're not expecting, as councillor Van Dyke put it, dessert every day, is, is probably a good way to, to look at it. Aging infrastructure. Again, we've talked about facilities for the future, huge pressure. But even external to us, Medicine Hat Stampede, for example, aging infrastructure all over the city presents pressure for our budget. Demand for community supports, as we mentioned before, the ask for community supports is growing exponentially, not always reflective in the budget or in the actual amount that is awarded. But there has been an exponential amount of growth in, in requests from the community. And we're seeing that especially with some of the item, major items that have come forward to this council with Halo, with the Curly Club, and now with the Medicine Hat Stampede. But there are smaller amounts as well that maybe don't always come across council's desk that, that we are seeing within the city. Changes to provincial regulations as well. We've talked about some of the changes that the province has made that have impacted, especially with the photo radar, have impacted our, our revenues and our costs within the organization. So that continues to be a risk within, within the next budget cycle, that there could be changes that the, that the government makes that impact us as a municipality. And then cost containment efforts. So as we talked about, instilling some new budgetary control measures, looking at different ways that we can contain costs within the organization, developing that sort of culture within the organization of cost containment and efforts that, that are going to go forward is with the service level reduction and the workforce management strategy. But there's always concern about cost scope creep or increase to costs that, that could come through inflation, could come through new initiatives that are coming online. It could come through things that are more intrinsic, like our staff time being taken up answering VoIP requests and things like that, that we don't necessarily see all the time. So those are financial risks. And then more on the operational risk side, organizational challenges. We mentioned with the communication side already. Hiring challenges, we're looking at, just like I think has been mentioned by our energy production group and our rate-based group, we're having difficulty hiring people, having people move to Medicine Hat, finding qualified people to do work, especially in professional services. I can attest to that within our area with accounting, that it's become very difficult to find qualified accountants within the city. Stagnant population growth as well is always a risk to our operations. We typically build into the way that we plan for development, some expected level of growth. And when things slow down, that puts pressure on the city. So we are seeing very stagnant population growth within the city, which, you know, slows down development. It slows down economic development. So that puts pressure on the city as well. Downtown safety as well. This council is very aware of the issues downtown. This has an impact economically. It has an impact psychologically. And so this is another area of operational risk for the city. Sorry, I see that you have a question.
You had one more left, but Mayor Clark has her hand up.
Thank you very much. Through the chair, you are, you mentioned a trend population-wise. I know I'm gonna get asked the question, so I'm asking you, what is that based on? I, I don't think we've had a municipal census for a while. Is that based on our, like, development permits? Or, because it feels like new houses are being built and people are living in them. What, what statistic, how, how do you determine that?
Thank you for the question. I believe I'm referring to the most recent Statistics Canada survey that showed, I think, for, over the four years, I can't remember if it ended in twenty-two or twenty-three, but I believe there's about a fourteen-person growth to the city population over that four-year period.
I do recall that one. Thank you.
That, that's the one I primarily refer to. We have seen other statistics, though. If you check out our city website and look up some of the economic development information that's being posted there. Most of their statistics are coming from the government of Alberta, who does a really good provincial dashboard on economic statistics. But we are seeing that trend both on the population side and within the region and area on the, on the business licensing side as well. There seems to be declines kind of all over the place. So I, I think it is a growing trend slowing down economic development, slowing down physical build development, stagnant population growth. They all seem to be kind of pointing in the same direction. So I think that's kind of where, where I'm coming from with that. And then, of course, scope creep is the other item that, that I have here on the list. So scope creep is, for those who may not be familiar with the term, is where we take on a project and it begins with a, a small ask that ends up turning into a bigger ask. And this can happen oftentimes with things like the new initiatives that we begin that start with an effort to solve a problem. And by the time we get to the end, the recommendation shows that we need to take on a whole lot more work than, than what was initially anticipated, or maybe things that we weren't expecting. And I mentioned one earlier with the two-by-fourteens with the new development notice procedures that have increased some of the time of our planning and development staff to answer two-by-fourteens from the community. So that would be an example of some of that unanticipated scope creep that, that can come in and impact the organization, not always rec, not always seen on a budget perspective because it may not come across as a dollar and cent change, but is definitely felt within the capacity of the organization and then the ability to take on new projects and, and provide customer service for the organization, for, for our residents. Some of the risk mitigation efforts in this budget include reducing reliance on business unit volatility in the long run, continued efforts in twenty-five and twenty-six to reduce costs, which we've talked about already through our service level inventory review, our workforce strategy, including improved budgetary control measures and better budget visibility, which we're working on internally, continued focus on fiscal targets and multi-year planning, which we started in this budget, and new projects, and again, my recommendation that new projects should be demonstrating financial sustainability, especially within larger projects like facilities for the future, Medicine Hat Stampede, and energy transition. Addressing aging infrastructure through facilities for the future is another one of those mitigation efforts, more on the aging infrastructure side. And then a formal process, process for intake of requests for community organizations, which is currently underway. Next steps within this budget is to come back to council on December second for a regular council meeting to approve this budget. This would be a good opportunity now as we're closing off this section. If there are questions or even if there's a desire to discuss or deliberate on the, on the property tax recommendation, that information will help us as we move forward into our December second. Because once we hit December second, we have a very short window before we need to approve a budget before the end of the year.
Mayor Clark.
Thank you very much. Through the chair, going back to councillor McGrogan's earlier comment about the net no growth, basically, can we please have more information on that? That, I mean, I think all, collectively, I would assume we're all kind of like a bit surprised by that. But it would be helpful to better understand it, I think.
City manager Mitchell.
Yes, I agree. And yes, we can bring that back.
Councillor Robbins.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, just, I just had one comment. I was going through the Shape Your City budget two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six, and just congratulations to the collaboration that put that together. It has all of the things that we've seen, recordings of the presentations, what is a budget, definitions, like, anything you wanted to know about this municipal budget is in a really easy-to-navigate format, including a button you can press if you want to talk to city council or to managing director, I guess, for that matter. You can press and get ahold of him and give some feedback on what you've read on Shape Your City. So I know that must have taken a tremendous amount of time, but what a valuable tool for the citizens if they want to know more. So I just wanted to thank you for it and for bringing it to the presentation today so we could highlight it.
Councillor McGrogan.
Thank you. So what I guess I'm hearing is that this is kind of the last of the presentations now, and the second we're to come prepared to either pass the budget or give some other direction. Is that, is that correct?
We do have one more council committee of the whole on November thirteenth to talk about land development and real estate, and we'll also highlight your economic development at that time. But after that, that's correct. The next, the next meeting will be a regular council meeting where we will be coming forward to ask for approval for the budget.
So I take it we probably got it, but that first document we got that outlined the capital opportunities, is there a shadow document with the changes that have been made since that first presentation that one could access?
To the new growth opportunities list in particular?
Yeah, there was a...
Yes, I think in this briefing note, I haven't highlighted them specifically, but there is an appendancy showing the deferred items. I think that we've provided in, maybe not in the public council format, but we have provided a listing of those changes as well in, in other mediums, I think, as well. Attachment three, I'm being told.
Okay, thank you. That's great. I appreciate that. So it seems like there's a step missing, and it might just be me where we have an opportunity to just say, okay, you know, we've got to five-point-six. What else is there in relation to A, B, and C? And I, and I don't know if this is really the time. I mean, we've been here already for a number of hours. But it seems that there's a little, there's a piece missing, and it might just be me that feels that way. But it seems like we need another session, a little arm wrestling, just about kind of some of the details. I do have some questions. I don't want to get into, like, the finer details right now because really, we've had the three presentations and there's, I do have some questions. I'm sure everybody does. So I don't know if there's an opportunity or if that's the December second meeting, which I'm fine with. I can do it then. But anyway, that's just my comment. I don't know who else might feel that way.
City manager, do you want to address that?
Thank you. Through the chair to councillor McGrogan. We can certainly have another meeting where we talk about this. I'm more than happy to do that. We do have that council committee of the whole on the thirteenth. However, it's fairly full, but we can always call a special meeting, and we're more than happy to have a more robust discussion. Maybe it would give council the opportunity to go through the package. And also, we can answer the questions about the population and population growth. Would that be helpful?
Well, I'm just one of nine, but I think it would be helpful for me. So I would, if the rest of council sees, I know none of us want another meeting, but I think we've got a chance to just make sure we've got this right. And on the second, we're confident in all that we're voting on, all the pieces align. So I, I would appreciate that, and I will say that I'm going to be out of country for the next council committee of the whole, but I might try to zoom in depending on availability of internet service in the jungle.
Councillor Hyder.
Thank you. Through the chair, I am in support of that as well, councillor McGrogan. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to Erin again. Wonderful presentation. I, I always enjoy your, the way you communicate and express everything that goes on. And I always feel informed after you've given us your presentation. So well done again. If you can get through to this thick Danish brain at this time of night, you're doing well. I too agree with Andy that we could have another special meeting. I know we don't want another one, but I would support that, councillor McGrogan. Oh, go ahead.
City manager.
Thank you. Through the chair, one thing I would just like some clarification on, what specifically, like, because we've highlighted every different department, and I just would like to know so that we can be prepared to help you, what would you like to see? And I know Mayor Clark has mentioned about the growth and more information on the population, so I've got that. But what else would be helpful, councillor McGrogan, for you in this special meeting? Because we don't want to have a meeting just to have a meeting?
No, believe me, I sure as heck don't. No, there's a few things that, that I guess I'm, I'm, I'm wondering about, and I want to ask questions around, for instance, the composting program and, and whether there's a way to find more efficiency there. I just wonder if there's just more of, of that kind of thing. And, you know, perhaps what I'll do is I'll put an email together with several things that are on my mind. I'll share it with all of council and, and again, we'll go from there, whatever it might look like.
Okay, because that would be helpful because we'd like to make sure that we have all the data you need and also the people here that need to answer the questions, so.
Mayor Clark.
Thank you. Sorry. The other thing that I requested was the, instead of just showing the growth opportunities, the capital and operational requests that were rejected so that council has an opportunity to look at not just new growth opportunities, but other things that directors and employees of the city thought were important for their department and our city that may not have made the cut otherwise.
Okay. Councillor Knodel.
Thank you, councillor Dimonowski. So on page forty-nine of the slideshow, I'm not sure if I missed this, but if you can just help me understand, there's a, under twenty, twenty-twenty-five, we're looking at two million nine hundred seventy-five thousand under economic evolution. And I'm just wondering if you can allude to, just give me a general idea of the details that would live under that particular line item. I, for some reason, feel like I'm missing.
Yes, so for those who are listening in as well, I'll also direct them to the attachment number four in the briefing note. The primary items impacting economic evolution, the major one here is going to be the economic development incentives. So that's a two-point-six-million-dollar amount. That's consistent with the funding that we've provided in previous years. So we're just looking to reset that amount. We're starting to get to the end of that funding, so we're looking to reset that amount. And there's a couple of new things that we'll talk about in the November thirteenth session to highlight how that money is planning on being utilized. So there'll be more on that at that point. There, most of these incentives will be within economic development, including our business and retention expansion program and investment attraction and strategy and action plan, which we'll highlight on November thirteenth. There is one in our airport for air service and commercial attraction and retention. So that, that component, I believe, is an effort to stimulate some of our commercial air traffic growth. If there's more desire to get into that one, manager Boyd would be able to speak to that particular growth opportunity.
Through the chair, I really appreciate that. I think, based on the conversation that we had in refreshing and refocusing our strategic plan, we do want to see that. plan, we do want to see that. I appreciate that it is, it is obvious that you're, that you have emphasis on that particular area. I, I know you're telling me that in the future I'm going to learn more, but I am wondering if you can tell me if we're gonna, if we're going to see incentives beyond the typical downtown core.
I, yes, for sure, we will. I'm gonna pass that one on to City Manager Ann Mitchell.
Through the chair, yes.
Thank you, and I'm finished.
All right, it looks like I'll make a quick closing comment. So again, thank you, as has been indicated, the presentation was thorough. I, I think, like others have echoed, I, it, it does require an opportunity to kind of reflect now. I know you certainly would like to have greater direction tonight. I might be wrong, but my sense is outside of, you know, any significant issues being brought forward tonight, it's more looking at the tweaks and the balances, and certainly those have an impact for your end. But for me, it's now taking all the information, looking back at some of the new growth, the revised new growth and the expectations, but without prejudicing, obviously, a final decision on December 2nd. I, I, I think this, their narrative thus far spells out very clearly to me what our, what our needs and wants and expectations are relative to the, the required percentage of property tax increase. So I'm very comfortable at this point. So, yes, Counselor Knodel.
Thank you, Counselor Dumanowski, through the chair. So my, as I'm processing all of this, I'm thinking again about our refocused strategic plan and, and the tangible or almost more specific things that we as a group have decided to, to prioritize. So I'm wondering if it's possible for our next meeting, if there's staff capacity, that we could, rather than having the, the departments be our focus for information coming forward to us, could we just have those five, was it five or four? Ever, fi, four? Could we have those four areas? And can you just tell us maybe the three top spends that will live underneath, even if it's the same information that's in here, just so we can go, oh, yeah, and the community can go, oh, yeah, that's their strategic plan, here are the things underneath that we're going to see as a result.
City Manager Mitchell.
Thank you through the chair. My intention, and staff has been working really hard on these priorities, was that it was going to come back on the 18th and that we would have the key performance indicators and also the, the cost associated to the four new priorities or honed in priorities. Is that what you're looking for?
Through the chair, yes. I think, I, I just want to, and I, I think this even is a, is a piggyback off of comments that have been made around the table, Mayor Clark, about wanting to know, like, what is the project and how does that project pair up with our, our vision? Because ultimately, that's the work that we do. We, we set the vision, you give us the project, and then, and I know the workforce strategy, there's, there's so much of it that's gray. If we can take the gray and kind of shake it off and then see those really specific pieces, exactly, yeah, so, thank you.
Mayor Clark, I see you're on the screen. Did you have a comment?
No, I put my video on so I could wave goodbye to everybody, but I was wrong about the meeting being over.
Okay, no problem. I, I will just end with thanking our, our senior management and executive team and Director of Finance and our police service personnel, everyone who's online as well. Thank you for staying late and helping us be educated on a very important decision that's forthcoming. So on that note, if there's no objection, any objection to adjourning, no objection, we're adjourned.